So I had to move to agenda adoption or any agenda changes. I should have gotten most on the floor to talk to the secretary. I'm just gonna go all in favors that I'll ask if you folks want to come here. All in favors that I.
Alright.
So Rick Russo, are you online?
Yes.
On.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Indication, lay your heads. When we come to you asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered today. We pray for guidance and matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us work together and encourage others to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each of us to reach higher and farther to be the best we can be. We ask this in your name, amen. Please stand before the pledge of allegiance. My allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we got a couple special presentations. Just a bit of word of that's well. Thanks, I'm vaccinated. Alright, we're good. Alright, let's go, we'll go with Mr. Clay if you want to step up. Here. So we have two members of our planning and zoning board that are not coming back sadly. And I think, boy, you've got to be the longest serving member that I know that I've ever. I'm so.
As far as they count, 24 years.
Just 24 years. So we got a special appreciation, Lloyd has been with us longer than probably anybody from a planning and zoning. Probably seen more from a growth perspective than probably anybody in the town. What a deep appreciation and heartfelt gratitude for 24 years of outstanding service. We thank you very much for being. Stand up and we'll do a pitch for both of you. Mr. Overcash, will you join us? So John, you've been with us for a pretty good while as well. You got 12 years, not near as long as Floyd, but a significant amount of time and also seen a lot of growth and helped us considerably as we're all learning together on how to plan things. So we have a deep appreciation, heartfelt gratitude for 12 years of outstanding service. We are greatly appreciative of your dedication.
Thank you, guys.
Good counsel, thank you. You don't have to say the rest, which you can. The next, Mr. Mayorfield, would you like to join us, give us an update of? Project.
Hey, everyone, Ken Irfield with NPV Properties. We're the developer in Farmington. We've been working on that, I've been working on it over 15 years. And so I've also asked on my thanks that John and Boyd through the work that we've participated in together to get where we are today. Been a long time since I've seen y'all before COVID and just thought it'd be kind of really give a little update on what's going on. Y'all have been very supportive to us over the years and we were so pleased to be getting towards construction and before COVID hit. But fortunately builders after an initial pause decided to move ahead. And we're making great strides after the construction progress is really come along. And someone, I don't know if there's a clicker here or something that, okay, you got me, oh, thanks. So if you cycle to the next one. There you go, there's a drone shot we took the other day just to show some of the progress. I think from the front maybe you see mostly mud, but you can see that's Farmington Ridge Parkway going back through the site. We've substantially graded the 180 acre site. That's the layout for Farmington Ridge Parkway. We've got the curb and gutter, there's stone base and the paving in, the bulk of the utilities in Harrisburg are in underground, the sewer and the water. And you can see the clearing that started with the builders. We have tri-point builders in Bergley, in a Taylor Morrison, up in the middle around the park that we've got. So we've been very pleased with the progress. We have some challenges in front of us now, the, you know, concrete and other construction items are very difficult to come by these days, but we're continuing to make good progress. We still have to complete the off-site work. There's work out in Rocky River Road and the signal, the new signal or the signal where possible extension comes in as well as down at the interchange and wide in Rocky River Road. We also have to do crossing at Food Creek and we're ready to start on that. And we still have to put in the landscape thing and the park and other things. But I feel really good about the progress we've made and we're shooting for end of October for substantial completion and opening the road to the park. So that's, let's put that on our calendar and drive towards that. Then if you cycle to the next one, oh, we have a second construction shot. Maybe see, we've had an awful lot of equipment and men out there working throughout the COVID period. And now the builders have substantial construction crews out there. And then the next slide would be our master plan. And that is substantially, the Harrisburg side is the same as what we had last time we talked to you, so a year and a half ago. It hasn't changed. As you can see, there's a series of commercial buildings along Farmington Ridge Parkway going back. And is there some sort of pointer I could use or a laser thing now? And so, and then you can see on the top right is the, is the residential section with Taylor Morrison around the park there. And then behind them is the tri-point with both townhomes and single family homes. On the commercial side, we're making good progress with our prospects. And right now we're, we're working with Chick-fil-A and take the pin corner there and Harris Peter Field going right behind them. We have a multi-tenant building that we're working on that would be right next to the Chick-fil-A up on the Rocky River Road frontage. That would include a Dunkin' Donuts and other retail tenants. There's also, we're well along with a daycare group to go towards about three quarters of the way back in the site closer to the residential side. The whole project, we have a unified development theme of modern farmhouse architecture is what it's dubbed as, which is, you know, consistent with our plans and what we've been working on. And we'll have a unified theme, both the residential properties and the commercial properties will all be tied together through the architecture. And that'll be true on both sides of the county line. The Harrisburg side is well ahead of the Mecklenburg side. And as you all may recall, the county line runs right up through the middle of that property. And so we're a little behind on the Charlotte side, just getting going. The Woodfield apartment site is, they're due to get started next month. And we've also struggled because of the COVID with our retail tenant mix. One of the things in the plan originally was to have a movie theater on the Charlotte side. And that's really not feasible after what's happened with streaming of movies. And so we are adjusting the plan on Charlotte side to women in the theater because it would be even longer before that, if that ever happened again. So we're, we feel really good about the project. We think it's going to be first class and something that Harrisburg's going to be really proud of for a long time. I did want to mention that we are working with the staff on the UDO rewrite at this time. And we've, we've seen the proposal that's come forward, we've had comments, we're concerned that there are elements of the revised plan that would make it very, very difficult for commercial properties to get developed in Harrisburg. Thanks. And so we're, we're going to try to work with staff to come up with some revisions that would, you know, again, produce a great result for Harrisburg, but also make it viable for the commercial developers, both us and others in the community that to produce really nice buildings. So with that all said, are there any questions or anything else I could add?
With regards to the Food Creek Bridge, how long does it need to set up before we can actually get across it and get it on bay?
We think we'll have that done in about four and a half months by, by the end of October. That's been a long lead in item. It's actually a culvert, not a bridge, so it makes it a little bit faster once we get started. But we've gotten our permits in hand and I think we can start construction on, on that pretty soon.
So from, you lost this movie theater, are you still looking for another anchor type business that will come in and kind of draw from that corner over there or?
Yes, we, we need, you know, we need anchors anytime you have a retail. And I think you all have seen what's happened here over the years without a true anchor. It's very difficult to be, really create the kind of people place that you might have. So we're looking at fitness hotel. And then we would still maintain the main street and service restaurant core in the main street. If I can just proceed.
Is that a lost call?
No, if you go back, I don't know if you can see the red dot. Can you go back, back one I can try to highlight? So there's a roundabout and then there's the main street on the Harrisburg side. And then the park that we're going to build. And then the park is surrounded by the Taylor Morrison townhome. But anyway, so we'll still have with the roundabout and the main street here, we'll have our core of what we call, you know, a main street environment with walking. No, we, we certainly would expect to get some sort of repub, coffee shop, other sorts of neighborhood services that create a nice environment. But as you get on the other side, we'll have some bigger boxes to work with. Yeah, and then if you go to the last slide, this, there it is. So that, that would be the Dunkin' Donuts anchor that we talked about being up front on Rocky River Road that we've been working on with staff to get all the details done. And, and again, that's our farmhouse style architecture that we're working on.
So if we have prospective tenants for you, do I continue or do you have a 1-800 CALL ME number?
There's, there's numbers on our sides, there's email or you can call me.
There's a sit-down restaurant in somewhere that everybody in this room probably wants one of those.
Yes, yes, we, within the Village Center, we would expect we'd have a number of restaurants. You know, the service retail restaurant is really the, what the community wants the most and supports the best. And is really the logical thing.
Hey Jim, Councilman Russo here. Why would you put a Dunkin' Donuts on this side of the tracks and we have one on the other side of the tracks? I don't really care for the same kind of fast food or the same kind of coffee shops on both sides of the track, tracks.
Well, I think they feel like it's a, it's a location they really want to have and something that the community would support.
Well, I would much rather see something else. I don't think that the people want to see the same like Arby's on both sides of the track, Dunkin' Donuts on both sides. Bojangles were already on both sides, but I thought that maybe you would come up with something different.
Well, I think in their world that they would consider those two separate markets that they're trying to serve. And, and the radius of, of people would support it and really cut down traffic within the community overall by the, with those separation distances. But we're certainly trying to source as many high-quality retailers as we can into the site. And obviously they need to be something that the community is going to support.
Mr. Mayor, when you said there was something in the new UDO that's preventing you from getting certain commercial properties, could you elaborate on a couple of those items, please?
Sure, and I don't want to get sidetracked into the UDO and we are working actively with staff to go through there. But there are things included in there that buildings need to have either a true or a false second story to them, all commercial buildings going forward. And that would something that would add substantially to cost without necessarily improving anything. We've, we've struggled a bit with drive-throughs and the placement of drive-throughs, design materials. And so there's, you know, five, five pages worth of items that we're grinding through and I don't want to.
Well, I just missed the right spot.
But through all things and hopefully we've just begun that process and hopefully we'll be able to run through all of those details to come up with something. Unusually in this case, because we're a PUD, normally all that would be settled, but in whatever went new wouldn't affect us. But our PUD calls for us to meet the then-current standards of the town. And so if the UDO changes, it would bring us in.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks more in October, we'll run across the bridge. Alright, next up presentation, useful more management practices at the collective place.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'll be presenting this one tonight. Let's see, you guys see my screen there?
Yes.
So, good evening, everyone. My name's Mallory Hodgson, I'm the engineering department manager here for the town of Harrisburg. I'm excited to be presenting here tonight for you guys. This is my first council presentation. So at the May council meeting, Mayor Sasha had asked for a presentation on the stormwater pond closeout procedures and how other communities were doing things. This is a process I'm, I'm very passionate about and I'm always looking for ways to improve. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to share what we're doing and get some feedback from the council on it. So Harrisburg is a phase two stormwater permittee. We're a municipal separate storm sewer system or MS4. And that requires us to obtain and maintain a national pollutant discharge and elimination system permit. So lots of acronyms there as you guys are probably aware. So this is administered through North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, but actually mandated by the EPA through the Clean Water Act. There are six areas that the town has to uphold as part of that annual permit compliance. I've got them listed here on the screen. I'm going to focus tonight on the post-construction stormwater management, which is our detention ponds. So stormwater ponds are relatively new concept to development and by relatively new. I mean that our ordinance really only began to address them in the last two decades. The post-construction runoff from any construction site, so this is talking about when a site is, is done being built. It's monitored for two things, quality and quantity. So the basic design principle behind that is that the post-development peak discharge has to be less than the pre-development peak discharge. So the water leaving the site after it's developed can't be more than what was leaving the, leaving the site before it was developed. That's controlled through a stormwater pond with an outlet control device. So it, it kind of allows the water to come out more slowly, lessening the impacts on the downstream. In doing so, in detaining the water, it's also allowing sediment to settle to the bottom and other pollutants. And in addition to that, some stormwater control measures implement a filter design that reduces the amount of total suspended solids that are released. So once the site is about 80% stabilized, the contractor can begin the process of converting sediment ponds into permanent stormwater control measures. So this, this is kind of the towns, our, the town of Harrisburg's procedure. So once those ponds are converted, they are surveyed to get the as-built information. And we review that in comparison with the design information. The as-built information is, is put back into the design calculations and we verify that it meets the intent of the original design. We review that package, conduct a final inspection, and then the engineer of record or the design engineer for the subdivision or it could be commercial. They submit that with a statement of certification attesting that it was installed properly and functioning. So in the case of a residential development, we're accepting the streets into our town maintenance system by way of a council resolution. And then in that moment, we're releasing construction bonds, less a maintenance bond that might be good for one year. And the ponds are turned over to the HOA. So obviously this is, this is a lot for the HOA to maintain and continuous upkeep is required to keep function. So, and how does it just get switched over to the HOA? What's the HOA's responsibility? So when the developer is at their final plat phase, they enter an operation and maintenance agreement with the town and it applies to successors or HOAs in this case. By means of that operation and maintenance agreement in our stormwater ordinance, we have the authority to enforce maintenance. And those maintenance activities include eliminating unwanted vegetation such as cattails, algae, removing trash, dredging sediment, and then replacing filtered media if it's like a sand filter or a bio-retention swell, something with, something that's filtering. So how does the town of Harrisburg enforce that? So we enforce that through our annual inspection procedure. The operation and maintenance agreement requires that the owner conduct monthly and annual inspections. And we are looking at the annual inspections currently. The town requires the inspection reports to be submitted by November 30th of the calendar year. That was a little bit of a procedural change on my part, just to add consistency to when we review those, have kind of a deadline versus a lot of municipalities require it the year after closeout, so it'll be on an anniversary date. Since that's different for, for everyone, we just decided November 30th will be the day that we require all the inspection reports to be due. And then any maintenance activities or repairs that may be identified in that annual inspection report have to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Failure to complete those maintenance activities or submit a report is subject to a notice of violation through our ordinance. So another provision of the operation and maintenance agreement is the requirement and establishment of an escrow account. So over a 10-year period, the owner is required to save up for the full replacement cost. 15% of that is front-loaded by the developer and the remainder is funded by the HOA. The town implemented the state's model ordinance to come up with how that should be funded. So the actual, the state of North Carolina wrote a model ordinance. It's not a law that we have to adopt that model ordinance, but a lot of municipalities adopted it. So going through this presentation, we're certainly open to choosing an approach that fits the town's needs better. So the major question was, what are, what are our peer cities doing? So I, I just listed these in alphabetical order. I wanted to get a good representation of what some of the surrounding cities were doing, plus a few comparable in size and growth. I also looked at Waxaw, but they're actually not a phase two permittee yet, so they're not having to uphold any of this. I felt like they should have an honorable mention. So I looked at Burlington, Charlotte is kind of an umbrella. They're actually a phase one permittee, so they include all the surrounding cities, which would include Cornelius, Huntersville, Matthews, Mitt Hill and Pineville. That also includes like CMS schools. UNC Charlotte is under that permit. China Grove, Concord, Kannapolis, Kernersville and Leland. And Kernersville and Leland, I feel like those are kind of like far throws, but they're really similar in size and population. So I did want to include them as well. So what's everyone doing? Leland and Concord currently are not requiring escrow. Burlington and China Grove are requiring it, but don't have a good enforcement mechanism in place. Kannapolis is in the process of establishing their enforcement pro, enforcement procedures. And I'm guessing probably by the time of this presentation, they've, they've got it down pat. I talked to them about a month ago. So Charlotte, the Mecklenburg County towns that I mentioned in Kernersville are all requiring and enforcing it. So for those ones that are doing the enforcement, they're doing it in a variety of ways. Charlotte and the Mecklenburg County towns require some middle of the escrow balance with the annual inspection. I think that's pretty straightforward and really easy to administer. But some other municipalities are actually setting up the escrow balance within the town's finance department and administering it that way. So it's separate from the engineering or public works department. So as, as part of this exercise, I wanted to kind of give an example of what this escrow account looks like. So I'm using Orchid Ridge as an example. It's a, that's the one we just passed for rezoning. It had 14 stormwater control measures and 459 lots was what was proposed. So I'm making a blanket assumption here that the ponds are estimated to cost about $75,000 each for the initial construction. And then I've got kind of a breakdown based on our current ordinance of, of what that would look like annually for a homeowner in Orchid Ridge. So if the developer is contributing 15%, our ordinance actually states that in the, in the first five years, the HOA is going to contribute two-thirds of that, of that initial construction cost. And then it drops back to one-third in the second five years. So in that first year, they, the developer is contributing about $160,000. And then annually it's about $260 per homeowner per year. And then in the second five years, it drops down to $130 a year. And then I show just kind of what I think a maintenance cost dropping down to $65 a year. That's assuming two grand of maintenance per pond each about roughly. So looking at simplifying this a little bit, what if we went to an even spread? So as opposed to two-thirds, one-third and kind of that confusing language. If we were to drop back to just a straight even spread over the first 10 years, it'd be about $194 a year per resident. So I wanted to give one other example, maybe we want to front-load it a little bit more with the developer. So 25% developer contribution and then an even spread over 10 years would be about $170 a year per resident. So those are just some examples. There are so many different ways we could do this. So back to kind of the original question, which is how are others implementing this? So for those cities that are requiring and enforcing it, Charlotte and Mecklenburg County towns do it a little bit differently. They require 33% of the total construction cost over 20 years, 5% of that front-loaded by the developer. Kernersville and Kannapolis are doing it the same way that we currently are, which is that 15%, two-thirds, one-third. So that's, that's, that's model ordinance, which is why you're going to see that in a lot of, a lot of other cities. I would, I would guess a large percentage of North Carolina cities have their ordinance written that way. So there are, there are issues that we could improve with the current ordinance. For one, I think the calculation technique is a little bit confusing and could be difficult for a transitioning council to implement or transitioning HOA to implement. You know, it's changing several times over the first 10 years. And then the developer portion is just arbitrary. It's not maybe reflective of what a developer should contribute into the maintenance. And then the funding to 100% is also arbitrary. I'm not sure that the, any reconstruction costs would approach the initial construction cost if, if we had proper maintenance going into it. So in closing, next steps, so many, so many options that were not presented. We can certainly approach this as a best fit and be a leader. But one thing to note is that we can't eliminate the escrow. We do need a surety of some sort. The town is on the hook for the maintenance of these ponds if, if the HOA doesn't, doesn't keep up maintenance. So they're a part of our permit and we're required to enforce this. So we have some recommendations, a lot of ideas about this, but we really want to hear from council. So I welcome any questions or comments at this time.
So I'd immediately say the 15% should go to 25% because I know just in the neighborhood, I mean, that's, ponds is actually the highest cost to the homeowners out of everything that we do, including. out of everything that we do, including the swimming pool. And I know for lots of reasons, because when it got started, and how many years transpired before they decided to collect the escrow, it ended up being an extra over five hundred dollars this year to start to cover that escrow account, and I know why. I think the other struggle that I had is HOA should not be experts in ponds at all, and it feels like, in the current situation, at least the HOA that I've been in, are trying to be and not doing a very good job at it. I'm sure they've called Rob a hundred times, if not more, trying to understand. It feels like we would be better served trying to manage the expectation from a town's perspective, making sure that they're kept up with appropriately, and if the HOA just needs some other assets, that's great, but hiring a contractor once a year is probably not going to be enough, and maybe we should be inspecting it on a monthly, quarterly basis to make sure things aren't collapsing or falling apart, because the costs go back to the homeowners. And with fourteen ponds and this new neighborhood, it's going to be high. I mean, that's assuming nothing is wrong, and the cost remains constant. I just feel like we're putting a burden on the HOA, but they don't have a handle.
I do have a question with regards to these fees and the escrow. With any HOA, there's always going to be slow payments, no payments. How does that get handled if the HOA is not a hundred percent full that year, as far as maybe they're five payment short, the five residents have skipped out, or are in the middle of the transition from one owner to another other? Or are they going to be required to make it whole? Or is it, we'll give you a pass this month, and maybe the next month? When do you collect?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay? Maybe? Okay, I'll just leave it. So, from the town's standpoint, alls we're looking for is, do you have a minimum allowance set aside in your annual budget on your HOA for the pond maintenance, for that escrow? Traditionally, that's not a hundred percent of what you're likely to do. Usually, you have amenity center, you have general landscaping, you know, you have several line items that you're using for capital improvements and things like that. So, in that case, we really don't dictate to the HOA how they fund the escrow, just that that minimum needs to be in there. So, if five people didn't pay their HOA fees that year, it'd be very similar. What do you do with the pond? What do you do with the pool cost? What do you do with the modeling and landscape cost? You've got to build that in for your collection, right?
So, I follow that then with two additional questions. One is how you enforce it, maybe if they're not applying it. And then, two, have we looked at, or have any other cities looking at, when the homeless soul being able to collect, you know, a fee, what I'm saying is like, the first five years? They, to me, these drainage areas perform more than any other amenity in the neighborhood. And we need to capture that money, no matter what. So, I'm wondering, can we enlist a developer to add that into those programs?
The developer can charge, you know, we try not to get too much into the weeds on how a property's priced and sold, but ultimately, that's what your percentage upfront, the developer has to pay. They need to recoup that, whatever that is set for the town. The statewide model ordinance that Mallory mentioned is fifteen percent. You can be much more aggressive than that, you can be much more lenient than that. It's, some are more aggressive and some are more lenient. We're right in the middle. I think the mayor had mentioned he'd like to see that at twenty-five percent. You know, one of the things Mallory didn't mention that her and I discussed also was, and you see Charlotte doesn't have a hundred percent that you have to set aside. Generally, when these ponds are built, or any stormwater control measure, you never really rebuild it from scratch for some. So, you may need to replace the spillway, a dam, maybe replace the outlet structure, something like that, but generally not replacing a hundred percent of it. So, if that number was, let's say, seventy-five percent that we require in the escrow instead of a hundred percent, with twenty-five percent of the developer's cost, or the cost applied to the developer, then all of a sudden, that eighty-five percent of the cost that the HOA would have to come up with reduces down to fifty percent. So, you know, I think there's lots of ways to get there that staff's comfortable with. We had some ideas, but we didn't want to make assumptions before.
Is your enforcement via funds?
So, our enforcement is that you, and this kind of circles back to the mayor's question about town contracting inspections. So, we have one neighborhood that a lot of stuff fell through the cracks on, but everyone else is handling it pretty straightforward, which is, we require them to hire their own engineer, a third party, because, like you said, HOAs don't know these regulations. So, a licensed professional engineer, they're required to ask to do these for the HOA and advise them what they need to do as far as name. That's, and they do quarterly inspections. They have to submit an annual inspection to the town. Once that PE submits that annual inspection to the town, that's where our enforcement comes in. So, well before it gets to us, that third-party engineer is told, okay, this isn't going to pass, get your landscaper out, mow it, fix the erosion, fix this thing that's not going to pass, because they don't want to submit to us a failing inspection. So, once they have their consultant on, just like, you know, hire a full company, hire a landscaper, maybe you have to have, you know, the empty inspection company that's doing this, it's kind of your three big vendors.
My last question, I'll turn my mic to someone else, is with regards to...
I mean, I like the idea of the twenty-five percent. I also like the idea of not going to a hundred percent of the escrow amount and reducing that, because to your point, the hole is already there, just kind of clean it out. It's not a complete replacement cost. It's a fix whenever sediment is in the bottom and nothing kind of stuff, it shouldn't have totally fell, it wasn't constructed appropriately. And I understand cleaning up sediments, but that's not rebuild the whole pond. So, I know my neighborhood, they ask for a lot of it at the front. To your point, if I move out next week, I shouldn't have to continue to pay, and if I'm still here, I should pay every year. I think that feels a bit better than sticking to five years worth of payments all at once with my neighborhood.
And we absolutely didn't require that five years upfront.
I know, I know. I absolutely know how that went down.
Yeah, we start the clock at that street acceptance when it gets turned over would be when we would expect the HOA to begin contributions. And like you said, you know, we could go twenty-five percent developer-funded, seventy-five percent of the initial construction, we could spread it over fifteen, twenty-five years. I mean, there's a lot of, there's so many options to the town available here.
My last question is regards to, have you considered an exception process or started looking into that? Because there's so many moving pieces. As an HOA, it would seem like we could do this, and went to this guy over here, and this guy over here, and we're not getting any work done. In the meantime, we're failing, but it's not the fault of the HOA, but...
Well, once, like I said, we do have one community, so I don't want to say, you know, this is entirely one, but all of our other communities, once they have accepted the ponds, once these have been turned over, there's an operation and maintenance agreement that is the HOA responsible. So, it's up to them to have the vendors. You know, they hire whatever vendor they want, and they can be really expensive, really cheap. There's lots of companies that'll do this, but at that point, their vendor's responsible to them. That the HOA or property owner is responsible to town, and town is responsible to the federal EPA. So, there's no real passing of the buck on it. If the vendor doesn't do the job they're supposed to do for the HOA, they will get a citation by the town. If they don't fix that, I'm just going to prescribe there at a time, the town will fix it for them. We'll take the escrow money to do it. If we didn't do that, we would get a fine from NCDQ if they didn't give us a fine, federal EPA. So, there's no, there's no gray area if we clean longer active past year.
The turnover of HOA members is huge.
Yeah, and as, you know, as I worked through this presentation and thought of ways that we could better this process, one thing that we're doing currently is we send a letter in July and October to let the permit holder, the operation and maintenance agreement holder, know that their inspection is coming up due. And I'd be happy to add information on there. We have great staff here in the engineering department that's really knowledgeable about this process, just giving them more information on it, or putting some links on our website, just, you know, quick notes or information on how to set up a call with the engineering department to make sure that, you know, you've got a licensed PE that's doing the inspection, just some helpful hints or ways to rock your annual inspection, basically. But we have that information available. We've looked at presenting to the HOAs on an annual basis, just to keep them updated and in the loop. COVID threw some wrenches in some of our plans for that.
You're going exactly down that road I was going with the continuing education, and I know, Rob, you sat on as a chair in the area's stormwater authority, and what they're doing to educate not just potential HOA members, but those management companies that so often oversee them and are the catchfence.
And I thought that was going to be your question, so glad you clarified it there, but like you said, we're a member of the Regional Stormwater Workshop of the Carolinas, and that was one of the, one of the classes that you attended, Councilman Miller, you attended, was stormwater 101 for elected officials. We've since opened that up to management companies. All the management companies in Charlotte region get an invite to that as well, so that they understand the same things that newly elected officials understand after taking that course.
That's it. Thank you. So, are you going to come back with some proposed changes now?
Yeah, we have a revision for a stormwater manual going on currently. Within the next few months, we'll probably bring that with some minutia that engineering needs, but we also wanted to make some changes to this, but wanted to kind of get the breadth of your thoughts here before we move forward with it. But I think we covered the things here that were already on staff's mind, which was the development portion, how many years we push it out, whether it needs to be a hundred percent or slower, and that really takes care of the financial situations. The implementation, I'm pretty comfortable with that. Like I said, we've had at least one fall through the cracks, but for the most part, once the HOAs get set up with their vendor, and the management company usually has some vendor they work with, they do all their neighborhoods, and they seem to work pretty well.
Is there enough information at all when they will fill up on that still to have to do something significant to it, or is it still kind of, since these are relatively new, several years, three years, five years, whatever?
Now, each neighborhood, we do the design for it. Every pond will have a series of maintenance activities.
No, I'm saying is, we know that in ten years, we're going to have to do a major dig out.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll say right on the engineering plans, you know, year three, check for sediment. Year five, dredge. You know.
Is there any benefit to, or not, is there any non-benefit? Is there any stretching it out over ten years, making it even payment?
I think ten years is arbitrary as well. I mean, if, depending on the type of facility, and really, you know, if the maintenance is kept up on, let's say, a pond, which is our most common stormwater control measure, shouldn't be a major renovation on that in the first ten years? You know, you might dredging it or something, just, that's really not that expensive. It's a matter of draining it, the ponds are designed to be able to drain, and then haul it out, some of the sediment. Rebuilding a dam or an outlet structure would be your most expensive propositions, and we certainly wouldn't hope to see that in the first fifteen years.
Well, I mean, based on residents, based on HOAs, those that move in and out, I think it would be more beneficial that if it's the same cost for everybody, instead of the first five years, this group of people have two hundred and fifty-nine, and then the next five years, that group of people has a hundred and thirty-nine, that if it's just an even amount spread out, there's no questions going forward, and it just makes a problem user on everybody.
Would it be good if that's ten years? That'd be a significant cost from an HOA perspective, seeing value indirectly. There's no still the watering box.
Yeah, and I'm not, yeah, I'm hearing basically the same things that Calorie and I discussed, which is longer repayment period, consistent repayment amount per year, higher development, developer portion of that, and that's reduced replacement.
I would think the schedule being produced upfront, so what I do is that was the right way, yearly fee. I don't have that.
That's one thing that Charlotte does that I really liked. They actually attach a schedule to the operation and maintenance agreement, and they have the cost estimated, so like, it'll have a line at a report, depending on what type of stormwater control measure is going in. So, if it's a sand filter, then, you know, year five, you have to replace the filter media. Like Rob was saying, those have their schedules and procedures for maintenance. So, getting an estimate upfront, including in it with the operation and maintenance agreement, and then kind of preparing a budget based on that, I think is the better way to go.
So, this is Councilman Patrick. I have a few questions, if you don't mind, Rob and Mallory. Regarding the initial inspection, it sounded like we tied it to a November inspection. I'm thinking that maybe we want to consider changing that to maybe like an eleven-month after the project completion. And I say that only because on most projects, a general warranty by a contractor may last twelve months. And so, if they have cracks in their spillway, or a pump failure, or something like that, an HOA may have some recourse towards the general contractor to get those things fixed that they may not have to pay for, and maybe we can have a little more protection for our citizens.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Second thing is, I'm curious on, you know, we're going through a UDO update at the moment, and I don't think we need to answer tonight, but maybe you guys can brainstorm on some things that we can do to encourage passive stormwater management, whether that's a reduction in impervious surfaces, or things like that, so that these ponds either need to be smaller, or they're eliminated altogether. And if, you know, if you guys could send me some brainstorming ideas on the UDO update, we may be able to implement some of that, so we can eliminate the problem altogether, at least on some projects, probably very large projects.
We did that, I guess maybe a year ago now, maybe a little bit longer ago, where we went through and did a low-density full-or option. So, we just actually got our first neighborhood in those twenty years that didn't require ponds, because we used all passive controls. The Alburn, I think is the name of the subdivision out of Blackwelder Road, is controlling all their stormwater through passive ditch controls, and didn't need those retention ponds. So, yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that throughout the UDO as well, but that was something that we had heard from the development community, and from just an ecological standpoint, as something that we were lacking several years ago, and they made those changes in our area.
Thanks. And I think the final thing I'd say is, we may want to consider giving HOAs an option, and I don't know how this would work, but for us to provide those inspection services at potentially even a reduced rate, or, you know, some rate, and maybe we have a person on staff that will provide those inspections to them, and so we know that we're ensuring consistent quality on every inspection. I'm not necessarily saying we require it a hundred percent, but we offer that to them and say, if you'd like the town to do the inspection for you, here's our flat rate per pond, or per, you know, cubic yards of, you know, removed soil or water, and offer that to the HOA, which reduces their, really their staff time in having to go out and hire an engineer. You know, they're not used to the business, they may not get the best service. So, I think that's a consideration we ought to make.
And we've discussed, you know, what that looks like as well, and if that's an option, we could certainly do it. We would just be the middle man between them. So, we would have to consult that out, or hire specific stormwater inspection staff to do it. But generally, that's something you do, not every day. So it's, it's usually more economical to consult that out. But we could have a task order for a consultant, provide those services. Obviously, adjust the tax rate for whatever, whatever that is annually, for whatever the HOAs are taking advantage of.
How much do you think that trade would go up again in there?
I have no idea. Look at, we could, we could do it in balance or something.
I would say that we're talking about stormwater quarterly inspections and annual inspection. Alright, so that's in the stormwater fund, that, those would be tied into the stormwater rates. And we're in the process of looking to redo those stormwater rates. The tiered option that council has approved for us to do a study on. So we can look and see at that time, what kind of funding mechanism that would generate, which may be enough to cover that.
It may always be, it would be hundreds of thousands. It would be a savings, HOA fees.
Any other questions?
Robert. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
You.
We're gonna get a public comment, and if we do have folks in the room and on the phone, or on Zoom. If you're on Zoom, use the chat or the wave at your hand feature, and we'll come to you in a second. I'm gonna go to the room first and ask if anybody in the room wishes to address council for anything that's on your mind, please come forward. Else, we'll go back to the Zoom session and see if anybody raises their hand. Anybody in the room wish to give a dress counsel? I'll not run it. Alright, we're gonna get to the Zoom session. If you would like to address counsel, please raise your hand. I do have, I'm not sure whether Mike Weaver is on the phone or in the room, is Mike Weaver in the room? Mike Weaver's on the phone, see if you can track him, James. Just counsel.
Phone callers have access to speak here, sir. Mister, you on that way?
Mike Weaver, if you're out there, if you can hit the raise your hand feature of Zoom, so we can find you. And so I'll just quickly, apparently he's concerned is about safety in Holcomb Woods. And I would imagine these problems, Rob's probably already heard something from this to waiver on speeding in Holcomb Woods. You know about that problem?
I haven't reviewed Mr. Weaver's latest complaint. I don't see my, I don't see it up here in my email yet, but we've gotten these in the past in Holcomb Woods, on the private streets that haven't been accepted yet and enter, exit the neighborhood in the, in the Cabarrus Woods. So I'm assuming that's probably what it is from an engineering side of that, you know, signage is up. Everything that's out there, could be out there embedded stop signs, four-way stop at Cabarrus Woods in the past for it. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's anything structurally that we can do. But ultimately, you know, this is a local issue where you can call an enforcement. So you can call sheriff's department and get out there. But also, 99% of speeding in neighborhoods like this is local. It's people that live there, and you can kind of address this through your HOA, through some, you know, public involvement and public meetings. Say, you know, here, here's the problem, you know, we need to, we need to fix it. I, I don't, I haven't seen in the past any opportunities where we could do anything out there short of enforcement.
Can we put our speed chart or the, we have our corporals, somebody can get that put out there. Let's, let's do that and find out kind of where this gentleman lives or find out where, if he's the most speedy. I think at least people witnessed and see it, so it might not hurt.
Yeah, we'll reach out to him and talk to, let's have at least learn about the speed.
With this sweet song. Well, I was calling on mine Zoom, I didn't see if anybody raised their hand, if anybody in the room last call. Here another signal, we will move on. So again. You put Russell Ford, second, probably second, all members say aye.
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 Alright, pose now, we'll start doing the pose, just forward, just making sure your eyes are something. Next up, town manager, your eyes report.
Mayor Council, we have a lot on the agenda, so I'll try to run through it pretty quickly, I don't have a lot. We had a Rockin' the Bird, Charlotte Symphony was a primary act that we had over the weekend. That series has continued to be good, this is our second one for the year. We had, we're estimating about 800 people attend, which is up from the last concert we had. Everybody seems to be very, receiving it very well. The Parks and Recreation Department again put on another great event, had a lot of positive comments. So thank you, gentlemen, your team, another great job. The new water tank that is on Rock River Road next to station two, that got filled up over the weekend. So now we will begin to drain the old tank, and I will have that cleaned and repainted and branded, so keep an eye out for that. We also have a couple of new businesses that are going to be opening anytime now. I would expect the next week or two, we'll see these, Backyard Burger Academy. So continue to keep council posted as we get those specific dates. And we've got a few upcoming events. The planning board is tomorrow night, they will be introducing the UDO update, so that'll be a big meeting there. Citizens Academy, that is scheduled from September the 26th to November the 2nd. So we'll be getting that advertised here soon. And then lastly, the committee chat, we have identified July 29th, that's 6:00 PM for that. And topics that we're talking about at this point is Wilmington, the UDO update, and some general discussion regarding, regarding development in Harrisburg. So that's all that I have, any questions, leave that. I'll turn it over to Brian Lee for the financial report.
Evening, mayor and council. Got your finance report for the month of May, and we have a revenue and expense dashboard here. Alright, so our revenues are all in the green except for water and sewer. And tax collections are up to 105% for the, the budget, which was reduced for COVID, as I've mentioned numerous times this year. And if we were to remove that effect from the budget, we would be right about, right about 100%. So we have nailed it for the year on property taxes, so that's a really promising thing for us. And that has pulled the general fund up to about 98% for the year. The only revenues that we're missing in the general fund are events and, and fee related. So some of those dropped off for the year. But other than that, we've had a really strong year with our general fund revenues, as well as our stormwater fund is right on pace at 92%. Modern sewer is back at 85%. That has fallen behind a little bit, and that's just due to use, you know, we estimated more use than we've seen throughout the year, especially in these past couple of months, it hasn't really picked up as much as we're used to seeing. Two to 3% of that drop off is due to the fees and the credit card fees that we have not collected this year. So without those, we'd be at about 88% and would probably be rounding the year out 96% to 97% once we do our accruals at the end of the year. So not a horrible year, but we definitely do have a couple of percentage points off there due to the fees. All of our departmental expenditures are looking good still as we round out the year. No concerns here, you do see one down arrow next to IT, and that is due to our budget amendments that we processed last month. And so James didn't spend that money yet, so it looks like it, it's a utilization of his budget has gone down this month. So the departments and, and the general fund are also doing great, nobody above 83%. And water and sewer is at 77%. So I'll show you again up here, revenue is only at 85%. But we've more than made up for that by having our expenses down at 77%. So there's no risk of us outspending what we've collected this year. Stormwater is only at 54% and then salaries across the town at 81. And into our project dashboard, these are facility infrastructure improvements that are single year projects or intended to be. Holcomb Woods Soccer Field, they're working on getting power established there. And then there's just some various projects that need to get done, like sod, fencing, a gate to the parking lot, and all that stuff is in our 22 budget. The Holcomb Woods branded facility sign, they're still figuring out a name, and that's gonna go to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. There's been two recommendations, so as long as this gets through the vetting process, one should come out in the next month or two. The historic farm mill deconstruction should get started this week, so good to see progress there. Our multi-year projects that are in design, just some standard progress on the train station and the 21, 22 water lines. We did finish paying for the Caldwell Road sidewalks, design services as well. Our multi-year projects that are in construction, the fire station training facility, that grading and concrete contract is on the agenda tonight. So that's moved up to about 20%. The transportation bonds sidewalks on Caldwell Road are up to about 35%, progressing well there. The elevated storage tank and its partner are at about 97%. And the 20, 21 water lines have moved up to about 25%. We did finish the sidewalks on Harris Depot Road and with the other drive, those look really great. And we've made final payment on a couple of other items that were already marked as complete. Our equipment projects, we just have one item left for the year, and that's the can strap collector set that is on top of the new water tower that recently got power, and I believe it's collecting data right now. So in our June report, that will show as 100%. Our vehicle projects, still a little slow here. We did have to move into service the public works crew truck and a water sewer truck. Some of the others are still being ordered or are somewhere in the manufacturing process. We did go ahead and order an engineering vehicle, so now everything's at least been ordered from the manufacturer. So that's a good sign there. But those, these vehicle projects will definitely lag into next year. Our professional services projects, the Highway 49 corridor plans at 90%. And I believe, yeah, we should have that presented to council tonight. And the UDO updates at 85%. And Sushil is expecting to have a public hearing in July for that. And a couple of other updates from, from the finance department. We had two successful bond closings in May and early June. So on the 26th, we closed the transportation bonds at 1.65 million. That's been funded, and we've already drawn down a majority of that money. The revenue bonds closed 2.17 million on the 9th. And we've gotten that money into our, into our account with US Bank, which is a new partner of ours. And we can start to draw down on that money soon as well. Wanted to report on two grants, the Harrisburg Park EP station grant. We did get a final award on that, so we've got until the end of November to construct that at Harrisburg Park. And I've been working with the SAP to get the ball rolling on that. And then the ARPA funding, we are expecting 4.85 million. And so we've submitted all the paperwork, our application, everything to the state, that's all been accepted. And we have a webinar on Wednesday, Lee and I are going to attend. But they should be giving us a lot more information on exactly what we can spend that money on and when we're gonna get it. So we know that we're gonna get two installments, we're gonna get half of it pretty soon into fiscal year 22, and then the second half will be 366 days later, so they guarantee it's in another fiscal year. So a lot of information coming from that, it is going to be recorded. So if anyone would like to see it, I can share that with you, probably be a day or two after we see the webinar. And then finally, we have an open, an existing position, but it has been vacant for a little while. It's our financial analyst, and so we're collecting resumes right now for that and hope to hire in early July. And we'd welcome any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I think we have Lieutenant Beasley, who's gonna give an update. Good evening, everyone. Proud to say that as of last week, we are back up to full staff again. All 17 deputies are out in Harrisburg and working. We'll, of course, hire our two newest deputies sometime in beginning of December to January-ish. Our May totals are 1,582 calls for service, 1,227 security checks on businesses and homes, 229 traffic stops with a average non-emergency response time of 6 minutes and 30 seconds. Also, we don't have any major crime trends currently going on that we are seeing. We started to have a little uptick in car BNEs, but luckily, the night shift deputies were able to locate them this past weekend and arrest them before that could become an issue. Other than that, I have nothing further to add, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, guys.
Alright, I'm gonna try to go as fast as I can. HBA had a good meeting this past week. Some of their concerns are just getting addresses of existing businesses, so they can actually reach out to us. I know they're gonna start working with staff, who's already, maybe mentioned a little bit of. New businesses, they're gonna get a report going forward, so they can at least engage those new businesses and draw them into the HBA world. So allow them, obviously, to learn from what's going on and help us out with that. I'm so supportive that we actually connected with the 600 or so businesses existing in Harrisburg, and trying to get them in that group, and they can ask questions and may as well back to us for any support that they need to be successful. They're staying here, by honestly. National Equity Committee, we concluded the police study, it actually ended up meeting with Ben Shaw. And a lot of the things that were proposed are actually running around at the state level right now and receiving positive notes about it. And likely, some of these things that were actually suggested from a training perspective are actually gonna pass. We'll have to do anything, we're just kind of monitoring and endorse, which is to say we support these things. But we're still waiting to kind of see what's happening there. We do have the conclusion of the health survey stopped, we actually put it back up. We've been a whole lot of response from the health survey. We actually let that back up in the education survey, just got it put out there this past week as well. But the water bill probably hang out till July. Not many businesses reached out to me on LED lighting. They're willing to swap out all of the town's LED light streetlights for free. Yes, I said for free, however, there is a catch, that's pretty, that's new money. They will actually be paid by the savings that we receive off of switching to LED lights. So the cost of the town will be very much, obviously, in a time of, we can update it a number of times. So I already turned it over a while, and reaching out to them, because I see what that looks like, sounds pretty encouraging. Factor fiction, we know, we have that up, and I think it does some good when, when things float around cyberspace that may or may not be exactly right. So I think I would ask, I had some issues with the last one that was put out there. And from now on, if we do a factor fiction lead, if we could just pass it through council and give us a few days to actually say a or n, hopefully that'll eliminate any concerns that doesn't feel right, doesn't sound right. And then what we put out there is absolutely fact, with zero fiction, essentially. Let's, let's just push it back to us for final review approval, so we actually got what's going out there, basically, any questions? Hickory Ridge High School, we're, we're, we have some, hopefully something is gonna happen this week. I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna let Rob go ahead and since we've included that all together, of course, I'll actually bring that up as far as your report. The recruitment firm, they are currently working on the actual job description. So they're finalizing that this week, hopefully in a few days. And it's gonna come back, you guys for final approval, which was to improve the salary range, which is being looked at by HR, our HR department, or Tisha. So that'll come back to you guys for final, hey, this is always good, let's push it out to more. Trying to get a quick one out, obviously, we still haven't loaded our job out there yet. But then the description that that's getting finalized this week, hopefully you guys can flip that up pretty quick. And lastly, we do have a Zoom session to talk about our estate, our projections.
And mayor, I'll go ahead and jump in on Harrisburg Business Alliance, council and mayor. We're open now for business again, we're seeing face to face. So any businesses in the area that would like to. We're seeing face-to-face, so any businesses in the area that would like to join us this coming Thursday, the twenty-fourth, we usually get started about seven forty-five. The upcoming event, we'll have the mayor addressing some of the businesses in the area, and we're going to also introduce our director for Park and Recs at that. As it pertains to the Central Carolina Council of Government, we just added some more information to a website that I encourage council and the public to go look at, which is called connectourfuture.org. Speaks a lot about the regional transportation plan, not just here in Harrisburg, but some fourteen counties and two states. So it's a very important document to go out and look at, where we're all collaborating as municipalities and governments to make sure that we're all on the same page, connecting our residents as they want to travel throughout the area. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have, Mayor, I have something here. I have an opportunity for Harrisburg. I contacted Jim Spina, Director of Park and Rec, about three, four weeks ago, about a disc golf opportunity for Harrisburg. Jim got back to me last week. I had hernia surgery on Monday, so I could meet with him on Friday with the Park and Rec staff and Russell Schwartz of Inova, Disc Golf out of Rock Hill, for a discussion on disc, disc golf opportunities for Harrisburg and a tour of the facilities. Mr. Schwartz was impressed with our Parks and Rec. Upon completion, we met with, we met and had the following opportunities. I couldn't go on the walk-around, it was Jim Spina, it was him and Adam, but there's two options for a disc golf opportunity in Harrisburg. One would be in Harrisburg Park, one would be in Farmill Park. The Harrisburg Park would be a nine-hole setup for beginners, seniors, families, and experienced disc golfers who want to work on their short game, approximately eight thousand dollars, which includes all targets, baskets, tee pads, distance signage, rules, signage, fifty discs for use for rental for participants. Cost also includes professional design. The Park and Rec Maintenance Staff to develop park maintenance after completion, which wouldn't be very much. Maintenance, of course, not expected to have a major impact. The Farmill one would be something we would want to set up in our C I P if the other one goes well. It's eighteen-hole golf course at Farmill, approximately twenty thousand dollars, which again includes all the targets, baskets, tee pads, distance signage, rules, signage, fifty discs. Park and Rec maintenance would, would be handling that. I had a few people reach out to me about that, thinking, knowing I'm a sports-oriented person, I think it would be great for our park, it was like finishing it off. So I wanted to bring it to council tonight to get anybody's say on it, if anybody has any questions, Jim's here to answer them, but I just want to get any feedback from council.
What do you think? Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to get a little more information regarding our disc golf opportunity for Harrisburg. We, as Richard did say, we did meet with Representative Russell Wach Schwartz from Inova, Disc Golf, they're out of Rock Hill. Russell lives in Charlotte, he came up and visited us last Friday, spent some time with him, viewing, viewing and touring our facilities, very impressed, as Rick said, with our opportunities there. In the process of going through and touring that, Harrisburg Park first, we realized that down at the far end of the park, down near Shelter One, where our bike sales are located on a walking trail that goes down into Harris Depot, that presented a really good opportunity for a nine-hole course they call Ace Place. Ace Place is basically a small manageable course, and it's really built for families, beginners, and seniors, but also for those experienced discers who want to work on a short game, more like if you're a golfer, our three course would be for an actual golfer. So as we looked through it, we walked down, we walked into Harris Depot Park, we recognized the fact that Harris Depot Park and then that portion of it, as well as the portion of Harrisburg Park, is one of our least utilized areas of the parks. And so by maybe bringing some kind of a new recreation opportunity, disc golf, especially given the fact that disc golf is, one, trendy, very popular, two, low cost to build, three, even better, low cost to maintain after. You know, we want to try to add things into the repertoire of Harrisburg Parks and Rec that will create more opportunities for residents, yet not create more cost for the town and its staff. This certainly qualifies for that. So we visited, and Mr. Schwartz was really excited about that opportunity. There is not, at this time, an ace place opportunity for disc golf in the area. Most disc golf courses that are already in place are eighteen-hole regular courses or nine-hole regular courses, long courses for more experienced players. And so that opportunity really hit home with me with the opportunity. One of the things I said I wanted to do when I interviewed for this job back earlier this year was, I believe strongly, family opportunities for recreation. We need to get more opportunities out there for families to take it together, get mom and dad off the phone, get kids off of the video games. This qualifies. And also, because of where we want to put it, in that area, in the wooded area, North Carolina, obviously, is very warm in the summer. Well, this is almost all completely shaded, there's a few sunny areas, but mostly shaded, really good opportunity for, for use, even in the afternoons. And so we toured that and thought, what a great opportunity. But just to be sure, we ran out to Farmill, Farmill Park, and we toured that, and Mr. Schwartz is also very impressed with that, in that we have so much room there, so many wooded opportunities, plus we already have a trail in place that we could probably develop at some point if we so choose, and if the Ace Place course becomes as popular as we think it will, we may want to expand those opportunities. That gives us an opportunity to study, get some data, get it to you folks, discuss it, give us a chance to get it into our C I P coming up in future years, that's something we want to do. Again, low cost, high utilization, low maintenance, right? Fits, it checks a lot of boxes there. And so, James, if you would. So like I said, we met with the staff, discussed the opportunity last Friday, James, please. We discussed right away two potential locations that would qualify for the program here in Harrisburg. James, please. Nine-hole course setup in Harrisburg Park, again, beginner, seniors, families, experienced disc golfers. Cost, we actually upgraded that to, because I actually did receive the actual proposal this afternoon, so we did upgrade that to eighty-five hundred dollars. That's delivered design services, that's helped with advice throughout the building process, that is all the targets, chains, tee pads, signage, and also fifty discs come with that, which we can use for rental, borrowing, whatever we want to do, we could sell them for those who want them, whatever we want to do, that comes with those discs as well. That would help those who aren't sure if they want to invest in anything, you go try it, bring it back to us. And there is some tax involved with that, but most of it is, a good chunk, but it's not taxable. So we also talked about staffing Parks and Rec staff, Parks and Rec main staff would develop and maintain the course, as well as we should not have a major impact on current and future staffing needs. James, please. At Farmill, real quick, eighteen-hole course setup, plenty of room to do that for all levels of disc golfers, cost is twenty grand approximately. We did not ask for a proposal on that at this time. We really targeted Harrisburg Park for the first project, for step-off, but that would go through the same package as we would get for Harrisburg Park in the future, and the same thing with staffing with, is us developing and maintaining the course and not having a major impact on current and future staffing at Parks and Rec. James? Estimated timeline, we will begin construction next month and be hoping to begin play in August. Target date would be August first, but Adam, Evernathy, the guys have an awful lot under play, we have Hokenwood to finish development, so we would be balancing those two projects at the same time. You know, the, the expectation would be for sure sometime in August, if not earlier in August. And I'm asking you folks tonight, if you would so support the project, to give us the room to do this project, not to exceed ten grand, that would include our input with cement and things that we would need. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions and new folks, if I can answer.
Jim, when you, excuse me, when you were looking at Farmill, how much of that space would be flood area, because it does flood so much out there?
Yeah, there would, there would be some, we discussed that with Mr. Schwartz, and he made the great point that, you know, when it's flooding or raining like that anyways, you wouldn't have much play. And it actually suits that, because you can't really do much else on some of that land. So that would be an opportunity that we could use something in that land and still have revenue, each opportunity. Again, if it's flooded, obviously, people had a lot of things more to worry about than that, but once it dried out, we get it cleaned up, Adam will get down, those guys clean it up, and you go for it. But, you know, we didn't really lay it out round quickly, so there would be some access down there, but we don't know how much.
I guess my question is, is would it, is that area staying pretty saturated?
From my understanding, it does, you know, and that would be something we would consider where, you know, where, when. You know, Adam, Adam said that what he felt comfortably doing is, when and if we got to that point where we would come with a proposal for Farmill Park, we would have that all mapped out and really deal with the areas that really get flooded.
So do we, I thought we still owned the land on the other side of tracks. Daniel was going to make it a butterfly park.
We do, we do own a portion, and anyway, I can't remember how much, but it's behind the Public Works facility.
Is there access, if, if you were to look at that space, I'm just curious.
That's kind of where we were stuck at with trying to figure out access to that, because there is, there's the other land that goes all the way to Robles Church Road, so it's kind of landlocked between Public Works and that other property.
And Daniel had talked about the walkway over the, over the railroad tracks, I don't know if that ever got approved or not. Yeah, I would support you guys on the, like, on three, see where it goes from here. Anybody else?
Do you have any questions?
I'll support you on the, on the R three, but the Farmill, I believe we can probably get some grants for that, so as you, as staff comes back to us during our budget process, come back with some finance opportunity.
We'll certainly be able to. Yeah, of course. And by the way, that is something we will obviously, once we get it up and ready to go, we were going to get out there to get some names on some of those, some of those holes, for sure, just like a golf hole.
All right. I have a motion, it sounds like we have some support.
Motion, motion to approve, Mayor?
Second.
I'll probably second, and I'll in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
If we could give a second motion, that would be to appropriate ten thousand dollars from contingency, the capital outlay in parks.
I don't.
We have to pay for it. I'll give a motion to, to boost the money here. So, just stated, done. We've got a motion on the floor.
Second.
Probably second, I'll in favor, say aye. I'll, I'll, Mayor. Your motion carries. Thank you. Anybody else, counsel comments?
I'll jump in, as the mayor alluded, the track and field meeting that a couple of weeks ago. If there's ever a time to feel like you're behind the eight ball, the first meeting may just feel like you're behind the eight ball, because the funding opportunities, a lot of good ideas came out of it. Oldex Mayor, Tim Hagler, is going to board tomorrow to see if he can get some funding, he'll be up in Raleigh, and we gave him a one-page flyer to hand out, you know, if you're going to dream, dream big, right? So we were looking at five million dollars for Hickory Ridge High School football field turf, Hickory Ridge practice field turf, Hickory Ridge Middle School turf, rubberize the track, Hickory Ridge High School, rubberize the track, the middle school, a field house for storing equipment, lighting on those fields, community fitness trails, and then innovative therapeutic playground equipment for individuals with disabilities. And we would hope that through this effort, not only would the student athletes be able to compete better and have their matches and meets here, we'd also feel like we could track senior games, special Olympics, youth sports, quarterly fitness events, state and regional high school championships, A A U track and field, junior Olympics, lacrosse, national championships, and a variety of other large-scale tournaments. Ideally, if everybody was on the right page, we would like to have this completed in a window of about two years, very impressive. But we're positive that we can get moving in the right direction, and we meet the County Athletic Director, Brian Tyson, on Thursday, so we'll see if there can nail it, maybe another way to count up in two weeks. And I did send an email to Jim and Lee, but thank you, you guys, for, as I mentioned, I didn't get there for the full, then got in towards the end, but what I saw was just you guys here down the park, and I appreciate it, your staff did a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thank you. What else, Mr. Justice, counsel?
Mayor, I missed something with HBA, if I meant. I have an ask of, of council, so as we continue to move towards a chamber of commerce type of element, the Harrisburg Business Alliance would like to be included in the, in the newsletter and in the water bills as seen fit of updates and information to our residents and businesses within the area, council would support that.
I'd like to kind of go in behind that and say, I would like to challenge our staff to find new ways to communicate with our residents and figure out what's working best. Because, and the mayor and I have had this conversation a few times, and sometimes I feel like our channels are dead. It's, it's like you want to tap the mic, go, is this thing on, is this thing on, is he might bring attention? How do we find, find the ways to get their attention? And what are other towns doing to capture that?
In a continuous effort to do that, Mr. Dillinger brought up a great point at one of our recent meetings, and the Harrisburg Business Alliance does a great job of pushing things out through emails and through social media, but there, not everyone is on social media, not everyone is, is receiving those emails, as Mr. Dillinger alluded to, so we just wanted to make sure that we could get to that demographic of people that we aren't currently reaching through that way. And Ron, I'll also support you in challenging staff to find.
And I think you should do some research, because what are others doing? I think if we keep doing it the same way and not get a different result, then we're doing something wrong. And I don't know what you're, I know that the concert series is now wrapped up because we're out of COVID, but even before we hit COVID, now that people showing up, and we're using the same channels to promote that, we need to switch channels to, to that point, and come up with a different way. Maybe we need that big scrolling martine on forty-nine, that's kind of got to really get people's attention. Something to consider, because I mean, everybody goes down that road one more night, and see the net.
Oh, true, I mean, you know, along that same line, they're wanting in, I almost would say, I want them to do their business for them to give us a plug back.
They're going to advertise our stuff as well.
Even if we just had something we could put in the business on a shelf, where people were checking out, or what happened, I don't know what that looks like, but.
So the board, the board met this past Thursday, and our HBA report will now be included in part of the council reports, and you'll get to see that in the box, like all the other reports. So now you'll get a true update every month with the rest of your updates.
And I'm going to see, counsel?
I'm delighted going on to Veterans Bridge from Roberta. There's two green lights, one of them has been dead for a couple of weeks now, so if the other one did go dead, it'd be hard to tell when it gets from red to green, that might be confusing some people. I know we have a couple of other things out there that we wanted to get the coming off of veterans onto forty-nine, the repainting of the stripes so that people would know where to go, that, that's yet to be done, and I know it's D O T, I get it. And then also, the two to three cars that only go through each night, the traffic light's still not changing good, so those are three things. I'll bring about the other two again because of that light sale.
What was the third one? The first two had been reported to D O T.
One was, one was the green light, okay, one of the green lights is out, one is the striping that goes off, and then only two or three cars going through at night around seven or eight o'clock.
At the same light at Roberta?
At the same intersection.
Do we know what turn movement that is?
No, it's like headed either way, heading across, right. Headed across, right.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, forty-nine. Well, Roberta to Veterans getting on, it's only letting two to three cars go. And then another thing, and I know, Lee, you're on this, and it's going to be Stallings Road, but we have, there's a lot of things going on on Stallings Road. And I'm glad to see Sushil's there. I know you're going to give us an update when you can get it. But are we going to see both roundabouts this summer at all? And are we going to see the Harmony one at all? Because when you look at the update, it says that they're still trying to do their design phase. And that's all the way back to September on the roundabout there at Harmony. So I know the residents are really interested. I know there's a number on it. So can you just give us any information? I know you're trying, but so that they can hear from you that information.
Certainly, I would like, we have Sushil online as well as Rob. Both of them have very intimate knowledge of where we are on both of those. So if either of y'all please pass on.
Yeah, I'll take the roundabout question. So the roundabout for the Shephards Project, they requested a closure on that. We're reviewing the closure on that. If they, if they get that approved, then they will, they're ready to start construction on that roundabout. That was supposed to be done under traffic. So there was maintenance traffic planned to maintain traffic through there. But that was in consideration of Harmony going at the same time. Harmony isn't going to go until next summer for their roundabout. So that does give an opportunity for the Miller Gardens to do theirs this summer. But they came to the table really late, like literally two weeks ago, tried to close it, but they didn't have any, any plan or file with us for what that closure looks like, how you maintain access to the school, how you maintain access to the site, how you maintain access to the park. We communicated that through EMS. We required quite a bit before we allowed a closure like that. But if they're able to get that all coordinated, then we do have the possibility of doing, closing that and having a detour and do that immediately. If they aren't able to get the detour, they would still do it this summer. Like, it would just take a little bit longer than they would do it on your traffic. So they'd have too many traffic.
So do we expect it either way to be completed by the start of school on August 23rd?
If they close it, I would anticipate it being before school. If they leave it, leave the roadway open, they have to take it off. I wouldn't anticipate that being done by August. But they would, excuse me, they would have to make take traffic to the school through the site during that process, which is what we approved previously.
Right, thank you, Rob.
Anyway, council, anyone on the line wish to address? Have any comment?
Hey, Mayor, if you don't mind, I had a, just a quick question or follow-up on the LED streetlights. And maybe Rob can weigh in on this. It's, it seems sort of trivial, but it's really important to get the color right on the streetlights and also that they're consistent. So, you know, if it's too red, things can look drab. If it's too blue, it can hurt drivers' eyes. Maybe we need to have a discussion just amongst staff about what the appropriate color is and how that highlights the town. I mean, again, it may seem trivial, but in street design, those things are really important.
And I agree 100%. We do have some standards on that, but I am not an expert on the lighting colors. And I've noticed it seems like Duke has a larger variety now. I'm seeing some purple lights and other things. So I'd agree with that 100%.
HBA meetings coming up, it's kind of their first time getting together. I'd really like to have as much staff as I can have there, Sushil. The reason this is us telling ourselves what we're going to help them, how we're going to help them succeed, having you, having Sushil there, even Rob was to show up. These are, these are the departments that you can reach out to for support, to grow your business, ask any questions about ordinance, got any road problems. This is the staff. I want to, I want to promote it us and what we can do for them from a business perspective. So if you guys can clear your calendars for four hours, at least four hours, not a change. Just an hour long in the morning or at eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Yep. What's that?
Thursday, 24th.
Twenty-fourth. So yeah, we could get some staff that I think will be helpful for introducing you and what you're going to be able to do for them. That's also what they're going to do for us, including advertise our stuff. All right, let's move on. Let's go to our first public hearing about the 49th corridor approval this way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first public hearing in front of you tonight is to consider the draft of the Highway 49 Corridor Improvement Plan. So we'll be presenting the draft tonight, taking questions and comments from the council and the public, and then bringing it back for the adoption. So you're not taking action tonight on this. So if you recall, Town Council approved the contract with Timmons Group back in June of last year. And we started this one year, or close to one-year process to create and define the plans for Highway 49 as we continue to grow. So the goal was to provide and document solutions and put that in the paper. Right now, we all have different ideas, but nothing is documented. I know the Community Transportation Plan we adopted a few months ago provided some guidance. So the goal of this document was to take it a little bit further and provide some renderings and some before and after pictures and some access management options along with the street, streetscape improvements. So once it is adopted, it becomes a guiding document for, for staff and council to consider as we move along. The plan, as we had presented to you when we did our update a few months ago, it will be in the format of online story map. Given the nature of the document itself, because it's a large side plat of maps, we thought it would be easier for staff and also for public to navigate online rather than in the print format. We do, however, will have an executive summary that kind of summarizes with the process and the outcome and some key, key findings as an executive summary that will be available for print format and also be downloadable from this website where the online story map will be. So we do have a representative from Timmons Group tonight who will be presenting the draft for you. Once the presentation is over, we ask council to hold a public hearing and close the public hearing tonight. And we will be bringing this back, not in July, but, but in August for the final adoption. So we can address any questions council or public may have between now and then. James, if you could let Paul as a panelist, and he can take over the presentation?
Sushil, I'm not seeing him in the room.
He is there. Paul Trapp, he's on the top.
You're raising it? Got it.
He is raising his hand.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you, sir. Paul, is he able to unmute yourself and share your screen?
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Sushil. Can you see the, the story map up on the screen now?
Yes.
Great, well, thank you very much. I'll try to be brief. I know you all have a very long agenda. And hopefully, council has had a chance to take a look at some of the material before tonight. But to Sushil's point, we made a decision to present the study in a ArcGIS story map format. Getting a lot more use these days as public meeting materials get more published online. And certainly during COVID, we had to do a lot of virtual public meeting. And so this is a great format to put information out there. So when you go to the site, there's a title screen. And then you have kind of traditional chapters that you can click on if you want to move around into different parts of the study. There's a brief instruction box on how to navigate the story map itself. And you can see we have one of the illustrations that we prepared on what some of the improvements in the Highway 49 corridor could look like if the town proceeded with these plans. We start with a background and purpose. And this gives a kind of an overview of where, let me actually reload the map here. Shows the location where the town is within the county, provides some, some background information about the corridor. We discussed a little bit about the Community Transportation Plan process that Sushil mentioned, as he indicated. We started back in June of last year. In the midst of COVID, there was a four or five-month overlap with the CTP process. But we wanted to make sure that we were identifying and following the goals that you all approved back in October. We've specified the specific goals for the Highway 49 corridor, which are to improve access, improve safety, reduce congestion, the potential for undergrounding of overhead utilities, providing landscaping and beautification, and improve the overall pedestrian corridors. So with that, we took a look at the existing conditions, went out in the field, collected some information from NC DOT. We provide a little bit of those, some site photos on the site. On the left, you can see the eastern edge of town where there's very little existing development, wide median. And then in the center, you can see an area of 49 that has recently been rebuilt in front of the Publix Development with some raised medians and controlled turning movements. And then on the right, you see the, the western edge of town or the southern edge of town as you're approaching Charlotte. And in that area, and as is most of the Highway 49 corridor, we have a five-lane section, two lanes, two through lanes in each direction with a two-way left turn lane in the center. We, again, collected traffic volumes from NC DOT. We did not include in the scope of this study any detailed traffic analyses at any of the major intersections. But we did look at the overall capacity of the corridor, which currently carries from 26,000 to 35,000 vehicles a day, depending on which end of town that you're in. Based on those guidelines, the highway can actually accommodate about that traffic volume at an acceptable level surface. But as traffic volumes continue to grow, especially during rush hour, you're going to notice congestion and problems in there. So one of the, again, one of the goals in terms of preserving the capacity, and one of the options was to look at constructing a raised median, which would help to control those traffic flows and actually give the town back about 20% capacity within that, that, within that quarter. So we provide some of that traffic data in a graphical map format. We also provide accident data. And as we talked about in an earlier meeting this year, you know, we've actually noticed a reduction in, in traffic accidents in the corridor recently. Some of that may be COVID-related. Some of that may be the improvements that have been constructed in the roadway. Overhead utilities and the elimination. You know, we provide another rendering here where you could see if, if the overhead utilities that were out there in the corridor today could be removed, what the corridor could potentially look like. It is a very expensive proposition, as we'll talk about later, because there are a large number of utilities within the corridor. But again, this was something that the town wanted to consider. Another part of our evaluation involved taking a look at all of the proposed developments that are underway or proposed within the town. We've provided a link to the town's website where all the development proposals are actively mapped. And if you want information about them, you can get that. So this provides citizens with, you know, real-time updated information about what's going on within the corridor. And then we looked at what these proposed improvements could look like from a design and construction standpoint. The options that we evaluated, again, were replacing that two-way left turn lane with a raised median to help control access and minimize conflicts. We looked at the potential for consolidating some of the entrances. The more entrances within the corridor, the more congestion that you have. We looked at adding landscaping throughout the corridor. We looked at adding a shared use path on either one or both sides of Highway 49. And so this typical section that we show identifies how that, those improvements could be constructed with various dimensions. This particular option shows how, within the existing roadway with only a minor amount of widening, we can continue to provide two lanes in each direction, a raised median for landscaping and access control, as well as either a sidewalk and/or shared use path on one or both sides. Here's another rendering that shows what these improvements could potentially look like. We had a number of public meetings, both with council and without, in October of last year, as well as January and February of this year. These meetings were all held virtually. We have a, actually a separate project website that we developed so that citizens and other stakeholders could take a look at the exhibits that we were developing, provide input on what the design options were looking like. We took all in, took in all the questions that we received, developed a list of frequently asked questions. And that information is also available by clicking on the website. Ultimately, we arrived at a number of conceptual plan sheets going through the corridor, starting at the, the western end of town, going into the city. And then, you know, as, as you can see on this particular sheet here, there's already existing raised median that, that we would maintain, a grass median actually, that could potentially have some supplemental landscaping. We've identified with these magenta circles, major intersections within the corridor. We've labeled it from a dimension standpoint. And as you head further into town, you start to see where we could actually start constructing a median. Some of it could be landscaped. Some of it would just be concrete median based on the width. Again, major intersections are identified. As we move further through town, you can see what these, again, these median options look like, the major intersection spacings, where there's opportunities for providing turn lanes. We've identified existing and proposed businesses and developments along the corridor. At the bottom of each sheet, we provide, again, a copy of the typical section to show what the landscaping could be like in these areas. At some locations, like here in front of Killian Plaza, there's an opportunity for an additional median break. We did not want to specifically locate one because we don't know what the future holds for this quarter. When we started, you know, the intention was this would be a 30-year vision for Highway 49. And so we fully expect, as is happening in other parts of the corridor, that redevelopment could possibly take place. Again, one of the goals of the study was to provide staff with a tool that they could work with developers in identifying where there were future opportunities. So again, there's, there's opportunities to further enhance and design these improvements. This is just one, one option. As we move closer into town and major intersections, you can see here in front of the Publix where some existing median improvements has already been developed. In this particular location, we show the potential for actually closing one of those left turn slots, realigning or redirecting traffic from that, from that existing crossover to key lane, and then potentially constructing a new connector into the Harrisburg Market so that we could maintain, you know, multidirectional access for all of that business. But again, minimize some of those turning movements and provide more opportunities for landscaping within the corridor. Again, heading further to the east, you know, the future rail station is identified. Proposed intersection improvements that would be tied into that rail station opening have been laid out. And then ultimately, we get to the area of town in front of anything automotive where. Then the existing two way left turn lane ends and and we start to pick up existing median improvements. Once again, we tie into those and really other than landscaping, we're not proposing anything until we head out of the eastern end of town. So. All these maps are available to review in detail. We talk about some of the short term opportunities, you know, whether it's landscaping. The existing quarter on the east end of town, or whether it's reconstructing and replacing. Some of the median improvements and providing additional landscaping in other areas. Based on the the potential for changes to all of the turning movements associated with access to businesses. We looked at some of the long term implications if if the median was constructed. And we identified a number of parallel roads as well as roads that were already included. In the CTP as far as, as far as future improvements go. But we've identified some other streets that may need some attention, some other intersections. That could potentially be improved to make sure that as traffic on Highway 49 adjusts to any additional access management. That there's appropriate opportunities on parallel streets and adjacent intersections to accommodate those existing traffic flows. Then we, we developed a series of cost estimates for the proposed improvements. As I'm sure you're aware, these are not inexpensive opportunities. Providing the improvements that were shown on those earlier plans. Could potentially cost between 30 and 40 million dollars for the the area of Highway 49 that would be reconstructed. Which a distance of approximately three miles. We provided options for providing either a shared use path on one side or both. We also provided options for the undergrounding of utilities. That is a another 20 to 70 million dollar option. Depending on whether the utilities were relocated as part of road construction improvements. Or if they were undertaken by Duke Energy independently outside of any proposed construction. So. So those, those cost estimates are available to review. And then finally, we, we've provided some suggestions in terms of future actions. And I'll just briefly review those here. We would suggest that staff review this document with any proposed developers, developers and approve. Improvements, approve improvements as appropriate and or dedicate right of way where needed on a site by site basis. We do think the council needs to make a, I guess, a philosophical decision on on whether the goal is to have a shared use path on one or both sides. Because ultimately that could impact how that gets laid out and how improvements on either side could be constructed. Again, we did not include any detailed traffic analysis as part of this study. The the quarter, the community transportation plan was underway at the same time. And quite frankly, the budget did not allow going out and doing a significant amount of additional data collection and analysis. But we did, we have identified six or seven intersections that are shown on those concept plans. That could warrant additional analysis based on those future traffic volumes. We would recommend that the town avoid permitting any new utilities within the right of way. Unless provisions are identified for how they would be relocated in the future, if the town does elect to move in that direction. We also again, recommend that you seriously take a look at the improvements to the parallel and connecting roadways. As the CTP gets updated in the future. And then finally, there's no funding that we're aware of that has been applied for or considered for these improvements. But if the town does elect to move forward with any or all, certainly would recommend that there be further discussion with NC DOT. About how to get portions or all of these improvements entered in the STIP process. We've had coordination with NC DOT early in the study to get their input from both the design and traffic and safety standpoint. But this has been an entirely town process. So further coordination with NC DOT in terms of the movement forward would certainly be appropriate. And then finally, at the end of the website, there's a number of links that provide. Access to the public involvement website. An executive summary that Sushil mentioned, I'll show you in a second, as well as other contact information. So. I'm going to click to the executive summary, did that, did that change Sushil? Okay, so as Sushil mentioned, the the website itself, the the story map. While you can print it, there is an option to to print, it's not really designed or formatted for printing. So we did create a PDF document that covers a number of the highlights of the study. It's a seven page document and includes. A number of the exhibits or at least samples of the exhibits. A description of the process. And includes information about the different recommendations, the cost estimates and the next step. So that is available, it's currently in draft format, we're certainly open to suggestions or questions that council may have. And again, I went through this pretty quickly, but certainly available to answer any questions that you all might have.
I kind of feel like it's missing something. I mean, this is a plan that is going to go for the future, but you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, if we start this beautification and we start 49, we are going to be cutting off businesses. And we're going to be moving traffic to the side streets. And when I looked at the document, I really look at parallel drive, I look at Morse Drive, I look at school circle. Those are areas that are really going to be impacted. And do we need to be addressing those first before we really address the 49 pathway? If I think about cutting the traffic here, just in this section of Town Hall where there's Duncan and Verizon. And we eliminate that traffic. Turning in, it's got to go somewhere and it's got to go to the major intersection. So I feel like it's missing something that we, do we need to go ahead and be addressing those side streets? And where the side traffic is going to go once we start the implementation of the project? Just a question.
Is that question for staff or the Timmons group?
Yeah, well, anybody can answer, I mean, how can we, how can we go about which is, are we just going to start 49 and then worry about the side streets? I mean, when I look at that, that's kind of what I see what we're doing, we're just going to do 49 and then we're going to worry about as it happens, the side streets. But now's the opportunity to worry about the side streets.
I don't, I don't think it is meant to be laid out that way. And I, I don't know if the document is written, the way we approached this was. If we agree, if the council agrees with the concept that is presented for corridor plan. We can, we as a council, you as a council can decide what that term says. But as we look into improving 49, whether that's be landscaping, intersection improvement, access management, whatever that is. The idea of pointing out those long term improvement is not to lose sight that if you close. Any of the access or make modification to Highway 49 in the short term. You have to think about making those side street improvements. So they go, they go side, side by side. So for example, if we decide to pick a project among the corridor and get into the design phase. As part of the design, we would look at what are those related impacts, not only to the short term, but also to the long term. Which may include one of those side street that was highlighted. So yeah, it's, it's not one or the other. If we pick one, it's going to impact the other, if that makes sense.
I will say, Sushil, if I could add to that. You know, there have been. Certainly changes in traffic patterns over the past number of years. Overall, we have seen a reduction in in traffic volumes on major quarters. But we don't know yet if that's just a short term blip. Associated with ride sharing. And now work from home being added to that mix. But I think what what council needs to understand or acknowledge is that. Highway 49 in many locations right now is at capacity from a traffic standpoint. You, you know, pre COVID, you would see that at your major intersections during the peak hours and on weekends. And so, you know, the, the concept that that was, you know, identified and discussed in the community transportation plan. About adding a raised median through the quarter is, as I mentioned, a good way of capturing back some of that capacity. You know, upwards of 20% of that, of those volumes. If traffic volumes continue to decrease, which which I don't expect, but it's certainly a possibility. Then you might not need these improvements, you know, and from a economic development standpoint. Deciding where to put these median improvements is always challenging. But other quarters, highly developed communities have seen increases in property values when access management is addressed. You know, individual business owners might be impacted. But overall, the quarter tends to improve when access management and and landscaping is provided. So it is a bit of a. You know, catch 22 in terms of identifying when and where these improvements could be constructed. It's, it's a valid observation that the side streets are going to be impacted. But I don't know that. You could predict the specific areas that need improvement prior to initiating improvements on Highway 49 itself. And and again, as as we were working on this project. I think it was pretty evident that the, the idea of improving the entire quarter at one time. Was probably not realistic from a financial standpoint. And so the combination of working with development over time. As as well as identifying some specific areas where some, some DOT funding could be applied for. Is is certainly part of the the future evaluation as you move forward. And and again, development, you know, certainly has the opportunity to drive some of these decisions. But now by having this tool in place, you know, staff can can better work with development to make sure. That you're not adding more entrances, more traffic to the quarter that then you would, you would have to address in the future. You know, perhaps even more expensively by the acquisition of right of way or the elimination of other new entrances.
Councilman Russo here, I like the idea. It just, I don't know where all the money is going to come from. And good call Rodney on the traffic. But I guess if they do it in pieces, it wouldn't be that bad because I live on parallel, probably would definitely impact me. But um. Something has to be done, I don't know what, but it's just. We just don't have a downtown, it just doesn't look good the way it is, but I know it's probably going to be really expensive. So we have to figure out where the money is going to come from.
Councilman Patrick here is, is, are some of these improvements a candidate for? A potential federal infrastructure package? I'm asking a general question that anybody could answer. You may not know that council did allocate some money to council special projects funds for designs. And that could include some of these things. So maybe it's worth getting some design proposals from the Timmons group or others for some of the low hanging fruit. And kind of maybe get a few of these things done and include a traffic study while we're at it.
Yeah, that, that could definitely be the next steps, Councilman Patrick. So like you said, the next step on any of this project that council decides to pick on. Some of those low hanging ones are to get into the traffic, more detailed traffic study and and create the design. So we can make the project ready for federal funding. Where we stand today, none of the projects are ready for federal funding. But if the council chooses a direct staff, we can definitely look at some of those one or two projects to make it, make it ready. So we can, we can submit for spot funding or whenever that new infrastructure bill becomes available.
Well, if council agrees, I'd like maybe just to get a few prioritize, maybe one to three projects and get design fee proposals for those. Not commit to them, just see it on paper.
Yeah, one thing we could do is if if the council agrees tonight and gives some direction, we could actually add those into the document itself. As some of the first priority list of projects that council would like, like to be seen done, that can be documented.
Well, the document does talk about that area that's. Outside of town, that's still greenway to go ahead and do that first, right? To put in a beautification area where there's no businesses already and there's a medium of green space. Doesn't the document recommend that as one of the first things, Sushil?
It's, yeah, it's one of the recommendations, but there can be many depending on what the council chooses to do so, right? From a, from a technical and viability perspective, yes, that was chosen as one of the low hanging. But from a council's vision, that may not be the one, and we could definitely add more.
Sushil. Being that we were not going to vote tonight, we're just opening for the hearing and then we'll come back next month. Is that an opportunity next month? Give us an idea of what you would consider low hanging fruit.
Yeah, we can, we can make an attempt to further give you, give you a few more short term projects or low hanging, yes, we could definitely do that.
I probably, I'm probably more conflicted than I've ever been on any decisions that we've ever come across. Very unprecedented times, we're in post COVID with high unemployment. So this traffic that we're currently seeing is that unemployed people. Are these people working? So I myself have noticed a lot of traffic in town that typically we don't see at typical time. So I'm very conflicted on where we're at right now in a planning process. We planned all of this during COVID, don't have correct traffic studies. So I don't believe we have a good study here. And what I'm going to ask, and I'm going to motion that we postpone a decision until at least September. So that we can get more facts in front of us and get more feedback from the public. Because many of these businesses haven't seen this plan and they're going to have a lot of questions. And I just don't think an extra month and do it in in August is going to give us the time that we need. To look at this thing and actually give it consideration.
So what do you want to see done in between now and September?
I would like to see more concentration of what's going to happen with all this unemployment, is it going to continue? Or are we going to get people back to work and the traffic patterns change even more?
Well. In my conversation with. Someone higher ranks where I work. There's this kind of posture. Companies are waiting, let me go jump first. Apple, excuse me, Apple jumped first and they got a lot of backlash from their staff. Staff's like, we don't want to go back three days. So now financial institutions are kind of looking at each other, when you're going to jump, you're going to jump, who's going to jump? One that's going to have it is, I said, come to be honest, I don't see, I mean, just in my organization, I'm here.
Members are talking about gradual, all that. Which is still won't be, it'll be next year before you see what normal is, we're not going to be normal for a while, only this year. So I don't know if waiting is going to make that much difference. I think with the plan, you're still able to watch what's going on and adjust accordingly. This is not like locked in stone, this is a plan. That we can change as we see fit.
Yeah, I think, I think Councilmember Selberg's point was noted, yes, it may not be reflected of the pattern, but that. The traffic pattern that's today because of COVID versus the traffic numbers we looked at that we collected just prior to COVID. Through NC DOT and 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 our own traffic studies related to some of the projects throughout the corridor. The traffic pattern hasn't changed that much. It may be switched from one time of the day to another, depending on people's work schedules. But overall volume that Highway 49 is carrying is is not significantly changed. For us to consider like improvements 20, 30 down the road. I don't think the the number, the number growing or decreasing is is really, really crucial. I don't think the, the number, the number growing or decreasing is, is really, really crucial. But we, we could definitely change moving forward. The point we're trying to make through this exercise is how do we manage this corridor rather than looking at the increased traffic and widening the corridor? I think that question we've already settled as a council through CTP is we don't want to widen it. We want to manage within the right of way. So the volume becomes relevant, but not as relevant to the decision we have. Just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
Other questions?
So looking, looking at the study, Mr. Trap, when we, when you look at corridors like what we have here in Harrisburg and there's businesses that want to have commuters come in and go to their businesses. Do we see rear entry if roads are behind and rear entry is an access into these businesses? That it works or it does not work? It is beneficial? Can you elaborate any on that?
Absolutely. You know, there's, there's definitely a different mentality, a, a different mindset when you consider pass by traffic or destination traffic. A lot of the, the businesses in this quarter are, are destination uses. And as you all know, with the, the advent of our smartphones and, and in vehicle navigation, it's, it's pretty easy if access exists to find your way to the business that you're going to. A lot of traditional highway retail going, you know, back to, you know, developments that took place after the interstates were developed were, you know, a lot of, of, of pass by traffic, you know, and, and tourist oriented traffic, you know, where if, if you're traveling through the town on your way somewhere else and you suddenly realize you need gas or you want to grab lunch, you know, then that's where access management can become a challenge. Because if you're not familiar with the area and you don't know exactly what you're looking for, you know, you may drive by a, a restaurant that you're interested in, but you don't know how to get into it. So again, there, there's definitely pluses and minuses. But again, the, the conventional wisdom is that access management overall improves business, the business environment, providing a more predictable way for traffic to find access. You're, you're absolutely right. You need to make sure that either at the adjacent intersection or on parallel streets, you can still get into those businesses and, and provide the appropriate turning movements to allow them. But, you know, the elimination of that, that center turn lane and the confusion that it can create with, with, with people wanting to turn in opposite directions. And there are certainly safety issues associated with that. Overall, you know, it's, it's been shown that, that providing that, that additional access control and the beautification options that it brings with it actually increases the property values within the corridor. So again, you know, we, we realize that sometimes it's a, you know, one, one person benefits when another one loses a little bit just based on where those locations are identified. And that's why in some parts of the corridor, you know, we didn't specify exactly where, you know, a, a, a median cut would need to be. And again, it could be subject to further evaluation, but certainly providing that alternative access is important. And, and that's certainly part of what we looked at, you know, when we went up and down the corridor.
And, and again, to add to that, that was one of the comments we heard loud and clear during the public, public comments. We, we did have a decent amount of folks throughout the corridor participate. In two public meetings, we had, if you recall, we had individual mailings sent out to each of these property owners through the corridor to educate them about the project, invite them to the meetings and have those discussions we did at the meeting. And also there were several businesses, business owners followed up with me and Paul. And we talked about those access management. The goal here is not to take access away. The goal is to manage the access. And yes, in doing so, there may be situations where the current business, the way things were set up several years ago may have, if you look at 49, some of the parcels have two or three access as it exists today. So we have an opportunity to manage that. Do they need all three? Can they work with one as long as they have a good option to get in and out? I think that's where we, we focused our energy in, in finding that optimal solution is how do we manage those access? So there is number one, the businesses are not impacted. Number two, the corridor functions the way it is. It needs to move traffic. Number three, the safety and then the beautification of the corridor. Two, there, there is definitely some anecdotal information among the property owners that it will impact them, impact them negatively. But it's not proven. Every corridor that has gone through the evolution such as ours and become a reality from where we are today to our vision has seen improvement in, in business retention, improvement in access management and also manage the traffic flow. So there's, there's definitely benefit, but it's going to take a while before we realize that benefit.
Eric, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Any more questions? Public here for those speaking for or against, speaking for or against. If you're on the phone, please raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, raise your hands. We'll connect with you. Anybody in the room? I don't see any hands raising. Last call. This portion of public hearing and we are going to defer considerations to next month. Is that right?
No.
August.
Yes.
August. Okay, got it. All right, so residents start plenty of times to talk to us as well as businesses between now and August when the final decision is made.
That is correct.
All right, let's move forward. Public hearing forward.
As, as council directed at the August meeting, we'll, we'll bring some projects that, that rise to the level that you talked about taking to the design. We'll, we'll have some recommendations for you to consider.
Good evening, Eric Council. Right, we are going to be talking about the fiscal 2022 budget. And we'll have a public hearing this evening. So we, last month, we actually delivered the manager's recommended budget as well as gave the public an opportunity to speak and ask questions during that meeting. We will, at the public hearing tonight, at the end of the public hearing, council will be voting on the budget. So this is largely what everyone saw last month. So especially the early part of this, I'm going to go through relatively quickly. It is, it's pretty much everything that we tell you every year, but just as a recap. So we began the budget process in November where we got all the department managers together and worked to develop their anticipated needs for the upcoming budget year. We then moved on to public meetings with council and we had a total of seven meetings, budget workshops during that time. And we got your input and direction. In April, we began looking through and analyzing those projected revenue and expense numbers and really got close to our proposed budget that we were going to put together for you. This proposed budget is intended to reflect the direction and the input that you have given us and staff throughout the course of these last few months. And hopefully it really represents the needs of the community for the upcoming year. So state statutes require that municipalities annually prepare their budgets. And they have to propose this plan of raising and spending money for specified programs, functions, activities and objectives during the fiscal year. The budgets have to be balanced where revenues equal expenses. And the fiscal year in North Carolina, specifically for us, runs from July 1st through June 30th. And this will begin in June 30th, 2022. The budget officer is responsible for the preparation, presentation and oversight of the budget to ensure the intent of town councils met. So we've got three primary groups of funds. Our general fund, this is our predominant fund where most of town's business is handled. This includes public safety streets and environmental services, parks, recreation, planning and zoning, engineering and filtration, all that's predominantly paid for by property and sales tax revenues. We also have enterprise fund and that's our water, sewer and stormwater funds. These are public enterprises operated by the town. And these funds are financed through charges to customers and they do not use any of the revenues that the general fund collects. So not, no taxes or anything like that. And then we also have these restricted funds and these are monies that are collected and distributed for only the purpose that you collect the money for. So we've got some examples here, the Powellville Fund, the Water and Sewer Capital Reserve Fund for expansion and also the Stormwater Fund. So all the monies that we collect can only be gone, gone to use for those specific purposes. Our core budget priorities and objectives. So we need to establish a budget that meets the current and future needs of a town. The continued utilization of our 10-year capital plan as well as our financial models. We want to maintain healthy reserve for our, our healthy reserve funds. For, those are really our savings accounts. So we have now these capital reserve funds in our general fund, water sewer fund and stormwater. We want to find the most efficient methods for operating our departments while delivering high quality services. And then finally, search for cost-saving methods and revenue generation that secure the financial future of a town. So going over capital expenses, so these are any purchases that we make for predominantly equipment and buildings over $5,000. These are what we call capital purchases. And our goal here is to track these large expenses to help us plan and prioritize for the future expenses. And these are typically not our day-to-day expenses. So we kind of carve those out because they're handled differently. And then our 10-year capital plan, which is, has been linked up with our financial models that help us to understand these long-term impacts. We have done this, as I've noted here, since 2018. And this has really been a great guide to help us. We've seen now over the last few fiscal years where it has played out according to what we have planned. It's helped us adapt to some of the changes that have come up and come before council. And it's really, I think, given the opportunity to council to be able to evaluate opportunities that we might not have had available to us in the past. So everybody knows that in fiscal '21, when we went into that budget process, we had a pandemic that was raging and us as well as nobody else really knew what to expect with that. So we really took a very conservative approach to the budget last year. We backed off on our sales tax collection because we weren't sure how people's spending habits were going to go. And we also reduced our anticipated property tax collections mainly because we weren't sure people are going to have money to pay for the taxes and whether they were going to come in this fiscal year or subsequent fiscal years. So when we did that, we really pushed out all of our departments. Control your spending, back, keep that down because we don't know what these revenues are going to come in like. And we also utilized some of our state and federal funding that helped pay for especially some of the COVID expenses that we had last year that were unexpected and would have had more impact to our budget. And despite all the overall positive financial outcomes, because we have seen property taxes come in better than we expected, we have seen our sales tax. What we found out with sales tax is that people changed their habits from going into retail establishments to buy in a line. So, and to some extent, we actually saw an increase in that. So, but in playing, playing this conservatively, we were able to really put ourselves in a good position to move forward and not be in an unexpected position that we were afraid we could be. So we moved into our proposed budget for the general fund. So again, we hope that we are on the back end of this, but we're not really sure. We're still trying to be conservative with our approach. So what we did this year, instead of really backing off on revenues, we actually backed off on expenses. And we said, we're just going to kind of take a year off and not really be aggressive with a lot of our expenditures and just give this another year to see how everything will play out. We have prepared this budget with a tax rate of 3550 and that is what it is today. We are maintaining the, this existing tax rate really to make up for some of the lost revenues. We did have some revenues that were lost, especially in our parks and recreation. That was significant. As everybody knows, we have a large athletics program and that got completely shut down for quite a while. Our events weren't bringing in any money, permits and some of those fees were down. So there was some loss in that revenue. Thankfully, not anything significant though. So what we're seeing is a long-term financial forecast remains healthy. We feel like we're really in a strong position to be able to address future needs and even unexpected ones. So we have a little more options available for us. So our service levels are expected to remain consistent and current with current year delivery. We have some additional personnel requests that will go over here in a minute. Two significant land acquisition projects that we're in some discussions with and that should occur, if they do occur, next fiscal year. Vehicle and equipment replacements, that's probably one of our largest group of capital that we're replacing. And then we really did, again, to this point of reducing the capital projects that we had scheduled. Again, we look back and said, let's back some of those up that aren't necessary to be done right now. That again, we can try to do our best to be conservative while we're continuing to try to see how this thing is going to play out. So I know this is hard to see and I apologize, a lot of numbers and a lot of years, but this is our 10-year financial model. And what you can see, the blue is really the highlights that we want to focus on. And really when it gets down to the very bottom row that's unhighlighted, that shows where our combined fund balance and capital reserve amounts will be throughout these 10 years. So you can see that we're really positioned well. We know that for fiscal '22, you can see that negative in revenues under expenditures. Part of that is by design because of the land, it's the land opportunities that we had discussed and the council approved for us to shift some money out of fund balance. And there's that repayment period. So you can see those fund balance percentages dropped to 34% and worked their way up by fiscal 2027, back up to 40%. So that's our repayment. If we, depending on how those projects play out, it could depend on whether we may not even need to take that money out of fund balance or not. So we'll continue to keep you posted as we go through that. You'll see some red numbers at the far right in 2030 and 2031. That is anticipation of bringing a second company into Fire Station 2. And at this point, we don't have a revenue source identified with it. Based on what it looks like, that could be a tax increase depending on how things play out over the next 10 years. But we've wanted to keep that out there so everybody was aware that in conjunction with the building that's happening down at that part of town, including Farmington, more than likely, we're going to have to have that second company come on. So our personnel request overview, originally we had 10 new positions that came before us from staff. And what you see in the budget this year and the proposed budget is seven newer reclassifications. And what you see in the budget this year and the proposed budget is seven newer reclassified positions. So we have two deputies, that's with our contract with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. Currently, they are in the budget as mid-year hires. Buyer, we've got an Assistant Chief of Strategic Planning, Public Works, a maintenance worker. And the next two are reclassification. So this is an existing position, the civil engineer. We're changing that title to an engineering manager and moving that up to a higher classification. And then the reclassification of Facility Maintenance Specialist, and that's simply going from part-time to full-time. Finally, we've got a pool of funds for seasonal park and recreation field monitors as we continue to have larger field space, which is a good thing. But with that field space, we have to have some more people out there to keep an eye on things. Our capital projects, you can see the largest expense we have in our capital for next year is the fire engine replacement. This is the first year that we've actually started with the authorizing the engine prior to the year is going to go into service. So some of you may have remembered that that was actually set to go in fiscal '23. But in order for it to go into fiscal '23, we've got to place the order in '22. So that's why you see that one there. Parks and Recreation Projects and Road and Resurfacing Projects are our next two largest set of expenditures. And then you see some other public safety projects as well as vehicles. As I mentioned before, we have our large amount of money that we have designated for vehicles and other equipment purchases. So our general fund revenue sources, you can see that 95% of our revenue comes from property taxes and our intergovernmental revenue. That's consistent with what we've had in the past. The general fund expense allocation, again, very similar to what you saw in the capital. Buyer, Streets and Powellville and Parks and Recreation make up about 63% of the total general fund expenditures. With keeping the 3550 tax rate, this is the estimated bills at the different taxable assets. So you can kind of see in general where anybody may be, what the tax bill would be, which again is consistent with last year. And here you can see a comparison of regional tax and fee comparisons with our other Cabarrus County municipalities as well as with City of Charlotte. So $888 if we're looking at $250,000 property tax value. That is only greater than Midland. Everything else is significantly below. City Charlotte is very similar. I saw that today that their proposed budget is keeping their tax rate the same. So it would, that will stay similar. I haven't heard about the others yet. So Water and Sewer overview. So now we move into our enterprise funds. The service level again is expected to remain consistent with 2022. In 2019, Town Council had an operating of water and sewer rate resolution and it identified rate increases every two years. And this goal was to really support the long-term needs of the fund. So the last time we did this was fiscal 2022 where we increased the rate. We always talk about, we buy all, most all of our water and we get rate increases consistently every year from City Concord where we predominantly buy our water, as well as Charlotte. So our sewer, WASAC, we get annual increases on there. So the goal is every two years to try to help recoup some of what those expenses are. We also have in this budget, an increase for system development charges of 5% as well. And that is predominantly going to be collected from developers. So the Water and Sewer Fund major impacts, much like I just mentioned, with the, our water purchases and wastewater treatment costs, we continue to get increases on those every year. We also have, from fiscal 2021, this current year, we did have a more of a noticed decrease in our revenues. This was predominantly because of unpaid or deferred utility bills, lost interest income, slower than anticipated new system growth. So we really saw an impact particularly in the early part of the year where we were in the height of COVID and we had put aside any collection requirements to try to push some of those people to pay. So we did lose some money on that end. And then one thing that you'll see in the budget this year is for the residential growth. We really jumped up the number of anticipated residents in the upcoming year. We have a lot of our subdivisions that have kind of been getting ready to get on and now they're about there. So we anticipate at some point during the course of the year to have a significant jump. We've got Harrisburg Village right behind us that's going to be getting on pretty soon. So even just from right here, right behind us, we'll begin to notice that. Also, we did, just like with the general fund, we went back and looked at the Water and Sewer Fund, CIP, and we determined that it'll be in the best interest for, at least for the next few years. Of course, to kind of look that around a little bit and back some of those non-essential projects up, you know, back a little bit. So we could make sure that, again, with COVID, we're not sure how people are going to be able to pay some of their bills, what some of that spending habits is going to be like. So we're trying to be conservative and only hit some of our major projects. Here you can see our Water and Sewer Fund capital projects. So we got water line upgrades is our largest by far. We've got a few design projects that are going to be getting started and that's going to be the Cabarrus Woods Phase 1 water line upgrades, as well as Sequoia Hills Drive and the Farm Mill Waterline Loop. We've got two pump stations that will be just decommissioned and we'll begin the design process on those in Millbrook and Archer Park. Our utility relocation expenses still there as well as the vehicles and equipment. So the total capital budget is just shy of 1.9 million. Our revenue sources in Water and Sewer, just as always is, sales and services are 96%. So always the, by far, the most. And you'll see here in our Water and Sewer Fund financial model, again, looking at the blue lines, we've got a couple of reds in there. I think, again, that represents what we're trying to do with our capital, is trying to keep that for our more necessary projects because we do have some tight years. Within this 10-year model, we do have the 5% for now, a 5% increase every other year. That would be in line with what the resolution has the council passed. As we did this year, we'll evaluate that going into that second year and report to council whether or not we need all 5%, a portion of that, or if we need it all. But we do notice, and you can really see, you look at the very bottom from the combined fund balance and capital reserve, you go from '22, just shy of $9 billion, up to $25 billion in 2031. That's a lot based on what we have in the books for residential development that will add significant customer base and our revenues will increase quite a bit from there. And finally, we've got our Stormwater Fund. No rate increases are proposed for the Stormwater Fee at this point. We will continue to use the funds to address the problematic areas throughout town, much like what we're doing right now. If we have complaints that come in about certain areas around town, we'll try our best to get some spot improvements made. That program seems to have been pretty well received, so we'll continue to do that. The regional detention pond that we originally had planned in 2020 is still included in the budget, but it's going to be very dependent on what happens here in town center. Also, as everyone is aware, that council did approve in 2021 for us to hire a consultant to create a stormwater rate model to look at a tiered system. And that was actually delayed a little bit. We have gotten that off ground, or at least a contract signed and ready to go. So we should be getting some information on that in the upcoming year pretty quickly. And once we do get that, we'll provide to council. There is the option for you to look at adopting that tiered rate system if you so chose during the course of the year. Unlike with the property tax, you can do it more than just one time a year. So that is available or you can choose to wait until next fiscal year with the budget and we're going to do it at that point. And Stormwater Fund financial model. So this fund, if you remember, much like what we just recently did with System A, what we typically do with this is we build up fund balance for multiple years. And then we, once we get to that point that we can afford to do the projects, we'll do the projects at that point. And so you'll see the capital need popping up significantly towards the back end of this '29, '30 and '31. So that's just representing saving that money up and getting to use at that point. So looking over a comparison of the operating funds, you can see what we have. The left side is only operations, so it doesn't have debt service or capital. The right side total is everything. And so on the total amount of general fund, we are showing for fiscal '22, a quarter of a percent decrease in operating budget. For the total budget, which includes those debt service payments and also includes your capital, we're showing a 2.95% increase in that. We kind of went into the year hoping to try to keep it less than 5%. So we felt pretty good that we were able to get below 3%. Water and Sewer Fund, that is increasing for fiscal '22 at 6.5%. You'll notice the difference there in the total column at negative 62%. That is a combination of the water tower, water tank that we did this year, as well as the refinancing of the debt that we did that required us to pay off some of that debt and get it reissued. Stormwater Fund, an 8% increase in operations and the same thing, because we are not doing any capital programs in that next year. So this is our budget for all the funds. So you can see at the very bottom under fiscal '22, that our total '22 budget is $73,691. And that is a decrease of 13, almost 14 billion from the prior year. Again, we talked about some of that with the debt service payments on our refinancing of debt, as well as some of our larger capital projects with getting those done. So definitely see that in a good position. Our fee schedule is pretty much remaining consistent exactly with last year, with the exception of the reduction of the credit card fees. They're currently at $2.50 and we're reducing those to $2.2% per transaction. And that again will allow us to break even. We won't make any money with that. And that's all that I have for the presentation portion of it. I'll be glad to answer any questions or you can go into the public here.
I'm going to have a public chair for those seeking for a gift. Again, if you're on the phone, please raise your hand. If you're in the room, I do have a sign-up sheet and I'm going to go to the sign-up sheet first while you're raising your hand. So James, ask you here in the room.
Thank you, Mayor. James Askew, 810, Combe Court, Harrisburg Accountability Board. It's a privilege to address council tonight. I'd like to comment on the budget. So I want you to think back for a moment to May 2020. COVID was new, not much was known about it. Our businesses had been closed for a number of weeks by that point. We were all still learning how to use Zoom. It was in this environment that our town manager presented a new budget, one that could have been revenue neutral, but wasn't. There was a lot of fear, a lot of uncertainty. These were uncharted waters. Nobody knew what would happen. Words like dire and potentially catastrophic were used to secure your vote. You go back and listen to that presentation, it's all important. Flash forward one year and we do know what happened. We have the numbers. The town collected record revenue, more than it had ever collected and passed and by the wide margin. But a year ago, we didn't have the benefit of this knowledge. We do now. We know what to expect. Last year was rough for us all, but the town survived. We prepared for a revenue disaster that never happened. We should all be thankful for that. The proposed FY '22 budget is a missed opportunity to put money back in the pockets of taxpayers, to return what's theirs to begin with, given that the crisis was not as bad as we let ourselves imagine, at least physically. To keep the same tax rate as was argued for FY '21 would be to plan for the end of all over again, to assume there is going to be another pandemic and worse than the one before. Of course, that's not what anyone here is predicting, but you're keeping the same forepens. Worse, we're actually raising the water and sewer fees, which is reordained by a previous council. I hope you were able to reflect on this as you conduct meeting site and as you vote on your budget. There's a brighter future for Harrisburg. We want to keep taxes low, but when you ratchet up in times of crisis, needs to be met with the same enthusiasm to pull back and offset as we return in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address council? Go back to the Zoom session as well. Anybody wishes to address or against this budget, please raise your hand. Stand up in both areas. I'm going to call the public chair and get counsel for consideration.
Move for approval, Mayor.
I'm motioning for to approve. Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay? I was curious. Thank you. Looking along, public chair, consider resigning.
I have two motions. That Greg would have to have two motions.
Let me just put the recommended motion forward if we can just make sure those are.
We also need to approve the tax rate of 2355. Are we going to motion for the second motion? Sorry. Any votes on the floor? Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay? Motion, Terry, to get that down.
Could I ask one? Lee, could you briefly explain that we did look at a less of a tax and then what our history has shown? Just in that instance, one question, how it's not, then in our best interest to do that.
Yes, sir. So we did try to evaluate that and we actually looked even so far down as a half a cent decrease. And what we were seeing is you could get to the first two or three years and it's fine. And then it would automatically start getting compounded and we fall behind. So again, we were really trying to utilize our 10-year financial model to do that. And so what will happen is it puts us in a little better financial position in the early years, but it evens out to right where we need to be and then, you know, by 2025, 2026. You know, the other thing is that having the additional money in place has allowed us some opportunities that we'll talk about later this evening that we otherwise wouldn't have had. So we're definitely not. So we're definitely not banking a lot of unused money into this process.
Let's move on to the reselling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, the agenda in front of you tonight is another public hearing to consider conditional rezoning, zoning map amendment and annexation of properties off of Hickory Road. The zoning case number for this one is H202103R. So we have three parcels that are included in this conditional rezoning totaling about 52 acres. The goal here from the applicant is to subdivide the property and build 42 single family homes on those lots. Property is currently in the county and will need to be annexed. So tonight's, tonight's public hearing is both for rezoning and annexation. The current zoning for the property is CR Countryside Residential, as I said earlier in the county. And the request is to rezone it to conditional RM1, conditional median density, which is Harrisburg's zoning classification. Here's the location map for your reference. You can see on the right hand side, top corner, the property is just next to the new elementary school off of Hickory's Road. The blue state you see on the top right corner is illustrating you where the corporate boundary of Harrisburg is. To the left hand side is a little close up look of the property. Just to give you an idea, there are three parcels. So the big one that kind of encompasses other two smaller parcels. So there are three parcels included in this rezoning request. There is the site plan for your reference. The site plan, along with the staff report and other documents, were included in your packet when the agenda was sent out. Again, this is how those 42 lots are laid out in, in the 52 acre total parcel that you see. I'll try to go through some of the highlights and we'll open for questions once I'm done. So the property will include some perimeter buffers, so that will be on each side of the property, except, except the Hickory's front is. So the requirement in the UDO, because of the similar classification of land use, there is not a requirement, but the applicant was willing to offer that buffer. So there is some separation from existing property owners or future parcels that may be subdivided. On the, on the north side, you can see there's already existing buffer that is offered by the elementary school. So this will add on to that. But again, as you see on the screen, most of the area to the north is either, either the buffer already for the streams or stormwater. So there's not lots actually backing up. You do have the, the trail that's connecting to the school. So we made, we were intentional in offering that option. So folks in the community, if it is approved and when Bill can have their kids walk to the school. There is, as part of the rezoning, there will be a median divided entryway from Hickory's. That will offer opportunities for us to enhance that landscaping entryway as you travel on Hickory's and also an opportunity to have a subdivision sign as on those divided median. Along the Hickory's Road, which is a thoroughfare, we do require a 25 foot buffer with a burn. As council have talked, discussed many times previously to provide that nice tree line and separation, some screening from a thoroughfare. So we are able to offer that as part of the rezoning as well. So the, if you recall, during several presentations, we always bring up the number of homes and its relationship to the secondary access. Once you pass 30 homes, we try to have included in the rezoning plan or included into the subdivision plan, emergency access, the secondary access. So we were able to do that on this rezoning as well. So you can see on the top, top right hand corner, how the emergency access only path would be created. So this would be accessed only by the EMS vehicles. There would be gate and they would have a code to get in and out. This is not for public access. We also have roughly identified where the mailbox would go with, with required on street parking along, along the street for folks to get in and out and pick up their mail. So here is another, another rendering, just to give you a different outlook of what those lots look like and how it is, how it fits into the overall site. So you can see the misery of the site is to be remain undisturbed because of the environmental features and there's stormwater and you can see different steps. Not different, but one step going to the south, which is again, one of the requirements we have. So we can connect to the future neighborhood whenever that happens to the south. There are some of the examples for your reference that Tyler Morrison, who is the applicant, offered during the application that what kind of homes they intend to build on the site. So this is an example, just to give you an idea of the home elevations. So going back to how does this fit with the Harrisburg area land use plan that council adopted in 2018? So if you look on the right hand side on the map where the store is, so the light yellow is where the property is today. So that is a low density residential, which the land is planned calls for up to three units per acre. Misery like single family detached homes, but you could utilize a little bit smaller lots if you were doing a conservation design. This subdivision, it's not, not a conservation design. It's your traditional subdivision with, with, with the lot requirements for RM1. So the table on the top, you can see how the low density residential and how the recommended zoning in the, in the hell of correspondence. So one of the zoning classification you, you see on the center of the table is RM1, which is recommended as corresponding zoning classification for low density residential, which is what the applicant is asking here. RM1 definitely has a higher dwelling units per acre density. So RM1 traditionally, if you were building on by white, it allows up to three units per acre. But given that this is a conditional rezoning and a site plan is attached with number of homes prescribed on the site, the density here is capped at 0.8 units per acre. Like we've mentioned every time, the, once it is approved, the site plan remains with the land and has to be developed as approved in the rezoning plan. If somebody wanted to change that, they have to come through the public hearing process and council will need to approve the changes if they don't follow the plans that was approved. In terms of public facilities, we do have water and sewer, but again, those costs to extend the, the services to their property will be entirely up to the applicant. The TIA, the traffic impact assessment was not done simply because of the number of homes that did not trigger our TIA thresholds. Typically, once you reach 71 homes, single family homes, that's when, that's when our TIA is triggered, which would require the study to be done. Here having 42 homes, that was not the case. We do have police and fire protection for the subdivision if it is approved. We reached out to the school to get some school impacts. Again, these are not our numbers. This comes strictly from the school. We do have a good partnership with the school. As the rezoning happens, we send those information to the staff so they can model it. Again, they, they are reactive, as we have talked many times. But as growth happens, these, these numbers can help them plan the facilities if they need to add more or restricting whatever the option the school board chooses to. That is what these numbers are used for. So the elementary school generation based on this subdivision added into the overall system is 18 new students. Middle school is nine new students and high school is 12. If you look on the right hand side, the capacity is what you see. If, if, if we're at 88%, the addition of this subdivision would take it to 90% future capacity. Middle school from 93 to 94 and high school from 110 to 111%. Again, these are numbers we get directly from the school. So we've added some conditions like we do with the conditional rezoning. The site plan itself is, is the main factor in conditional rezoning, but we also highlight some key conditions that we want applicant to abide by. The first one is your traditional, the rules that they need to follow, even, even if staff misses or there are new regulations in place, they need to be complied. We restrict the primary cladding materials to non-vinyl products. So the vinyl siding will not be utilized in this subdivision. And the third one is again, no exposed concrete foundation. Again, that goes back to the maintaining the quality elevation. So they will be able to disguise with some other materials as appropriate. Mailbox had to meet the ADA standards. They also, in this site plan, actually all of the heritage trees that were identified are staying. None of them are planned to be removed. But again, through, through the construction, we do have requirement and inspection that occurs by our staff during the construction, but for any reason, if those are impacted or the trees happen to die, then we do have in the UDO, the existing UDO mitigation options to do that. And I know some of, some of you as council have reached out to me to make those rules more stringent on the new UDO and we've done that. So there are much higher fines and, and requirements we've added, added into, into the new draft UDO, which will come, continue in July. Applicant also agrees that all ponds shall be wet pond and there is a requirement for the fountain and, and certain percentage, 25% to the permanent pool area to maintain that water level to, to help the aquatic life in these ponds. Applicant agrees that the stormwater facility to be surrounded by the vinyl farm fence and also agrees that all the roads will be to our design standards. Again, as we've combined the annexation, as I mentioned earlier, this also includes along with the rezoning annexation, voluntary annexation. This is a contiguous annexation, meaning there is a corporate property right next to it, which being the school in this case. So that makes us a contiguous annexation. As I said, the intent is to build 42 single family homes. Once annexed, we did meet all the requirements for annexation, posting the notification in the paper and, and mailing letters to their adjoining property owners regarding the annexation and rezoning. There is annexation plat, just for reference, which will be recorded once approved. So again, going back to the process, we started early on, the neighborhood meeting and this rezoning request was held on January 21st. As we mentioned in the previous presentation, it is consistent with what we had in our hellup and our UDO. This was presented to the planning board at their May 18th meeting and planning board recommended that council approve the conditional rezoning that is in front of you tonight. Again, the requested voluntary annexation is, is contiguous to our corporate boundary. And at this point, staff is recommending that council open a public hearing, hold a public hearing tonight on both rezoning and annexation, close the public hearing and staff will bring it back as a new old business, pardon me, actually as an old business item for action at the, at the July meeting. That is all for this presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have before you open up for public comment.
Could you help me understand the second half of this project? Whereas when you get to the lots 21 to 31 and then.
Councilmember, I'm, I'm having a hard time.
Could you help me understand lots 21 to 31, the second half of that property and the water flow that's separating there as diagram? How, do we have any history on that creek or whatever that water piece is?
Okay, I, I didn't catch. Rob, did you, did you catch his question?
Rob, it's not the room.
Okay. Can you speak to the microns?
Yeah, there's, it looks like there's water between the two halves of the neighborhood, right? So he's, he's just asking about the history of that water flow, I guess, flood zone perhaps, you know, both sides, wherever that water is running to and from.
So it's, it's flowing towards like, you can see on the, on the west side where the, if you look on the screen, it says 60 foot sanitary sewer easement. So all of that is flowing in that direction where the stormwater pond is. So natural topography is like going, going towards that side of the parcel.
Is there any flooding concerns?
Yeah, well, the flooding concern is more about the flooding concerns, but at the same time, appears to be no way out unless that next neighborhood gets built. We don't have any indication of the next neighborhood would be proposed, do we?
Yeah. So there is definitely no flooding concern at this point, because all of the stormwater will be, will be piped and managed through that pond. But again, yeah, you're right. So right now there is, there is one access through Hickory's and there is a stub connecting, but this is typical with any subdivision we do. But we do have the secondary access which comes and again joins the main trunk that goes through the site. But yes, right now it is, it is one way in and one way out for the public.
And your, your comment is there's no concern because they're going to handle their own stormwater. But as we all understand, it's never the development that causes the stormwater. It's the water coming from other areas that creates the flood. So I'm struggling in that piece. At the same time, is there any ability for the developer to expand that buffer? He's got listed there eight foot perimeter buffer, especially on lots 21 to lots 31. Do we know if that buffer could be expanded?
So those lots, if you look on the map, yes, there is that eight foot landscape buffer, but you're also, if you look on that designation, that's, that's a hundred year flood plain, the, the dark gray. So the property is way outside the flood plain. I, I'm actually just trying, trying to answer. I'm having a hard time understanding the concern. Is the concern that from a stormwater or just from, from water flow coming from adjoining properties onto this site?
There's, there's a concern there. At the same time, I'm looking at a neighborhood today in my backyard has an eight foot buffer. And I can speak to that effectively and say, an eight foot buffer is very small. And I'm asking, is there the ability to have the developer expand that from eight foot to say 25 foot? So whatever does he build to that other property, that those owners of those lots have some type of buffer between them?
Yeah, a council member Smith, yeah, you could ask, ask that of the applicant. Again, as I noted, the, the UDO does not, the way it stands today, it does not even require that eight foot buffer. We were able to ask that as part of the conditional rezoning. If you ask for more, I will let the applicant speak. They, they may be in the room, speak for that topic if they're willing to and go back and look at that. At this point, from my, my standpoint, staff has asked for something that we didn't have in the UDO and they already offered something beyond that. And, and as things happen on the adjoining property, depending on what project comes in, if it is similar kind of project, smaller homes, then we would get at least a minimum of eight foot buffer tagged on to that. So that gives you 16 foot. But if it is, comes as a larger land assemblies and if it is a conservation style subdivision, then that gives us an opportunity to add a 25 foot buffer with a burn or a 50 foot wide buffer.
So Sheil, I thought in the planning and zoning committee or maybe one of the developer meeting, is that going to be a bridge built across that waterway between the first part of the development and the second part? Or is that just going to be a flame road?
That, that would be some, some kind of a bridge, whether it's going to be full bridge or some color. We haven't designed that yet, but.
Well, the developer probably can open speak in a second.
If they have some more information, but it will be an elevated crossing. It's not going to be on great road.
What other questions?
Also, could we get an order question on the emergency exit up at the front? What would be the consideration for the use of that?
Okay, I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Sheil.
I did not catch that question. Councilmember Smith, I thought had something, but it didn't, it didn't come through fully.
I'm asking about the emergency exit at the front of the neighborhood. What is the purpose of what it would be used?
The, the purpose is for if, if something happens at the main entrance, emergency vehicle has. the emergency vehicle has some other way to get, get into the neighborhood.
It eliminates the second real entrance, but again, that kind of interest blooms out as the same entrance is somewhere in situation where it's not far from the main entrance. It's gated, but the fire department lost on it. It allows them to drive in and there's the work, so it gets better than.
They, when the applicant speaks, this is next to a elementary school. And I think I read on there about around the S C M, the B M P, that there would be a fence. Want to be sure that that is very protective to where if one of those elementary kids get into that neighborhood, they will not be able to get into that B M P or get their heads in that type of thing. Because we know elementary style children will go towards water. So we just want to be sure that there's safety there, having especially that path that comes from the school into the neighborhood is a concern. And Sushil, the, the kiosk about the parking with the, the mailboxes, it's, it's going to be parking on the street. They're not going to be able to pull, pull off very much. How's that handled?
There will be parking on the street.
So it'll be able to handle all the kiosses and, and the traffic get by without a problem?
Yes, so depending on number of kiosks, we have a, on-street parking requirements. They will be needing that, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Right, pardon, I think you did a couple of questions you probably heard about her possible bridge or lack of bridge, call for whatever you got going on. And the others that you heard.
Sir, do you want me to go through the presentation?
Yes, you have a presentation at the very end, yes. You have four questions.
Right, thank you. Good evening everyone. Sushil, you have my presentation?
Sir, let me pull, let me pull it up. Can you say?
Yes, sir, thank you, Sushil. Again, everyone, good evening tonight. Thank you for hearing our request to be annexed and rezoned into the town of Harrisburg. Sushil, go to the next one. Again, I'm Alan Curly with Taylor Morrison. Any more here who is a director of planning entitlement for McAdams, the engineer, if there are any technical questions? Just a couple of quick things about us. I think most of you've probably heard of our company. We're Taylor Morrison, Taylor Morrison entered the share of the market by way of acquiring Orleans Homes in two thousand and fifteen. Since entering the market, we've been active the entire time in Harrisburg and different communities. We're currently active in Holcombe Woods, and as Mr. Springfield said earlier, we are one of the builders in the Farmington project that's under development now. Looking forward to opening that project later in the fall. If you allow me just to brag on our company just a little bit. One of the things we're really proud of is we've just been awarded for the sixth year America's Most Trusted Home Builder. And we also are the twenty twenty builder of the year. Sushil, go to the next slide. Again, we've already gone over this one as Sushil's presentation. And some of this will be duplication, and I won't spend much time. That's Sushil and his staff at the very job putting this together. But here's an aerial just to the north of us is Henry Elementary School. And south is an agricultural property and residential across the street here and across the street. As Sushil pointed out, this is in the low to medium density land use plan, which was called for one to two units per acre. We're currently at just under one unit to the acre. As a condition that we've agreed to, the max of forty two lots on the property. Again, that's just less than one unit to the acre. Lot size, the smallest lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. The largest is a little over forty two thousand, making the average for the community just around twenty thousand square feet. Forty percent of the site has been dedicated to tree save and to open space. And as C T A pointed out earlier, iron and aluminum will not be a primary material in any of our elevations. This is duplication. Some of, some of these notes may pop up, Sushil, as you hit them. And you can go through them fairly quickly because you did a good job hitting them in your presentation. Talks about the tree save, the flood plain, the access to the elementary school. You can go through those quickly, Sushil. Okay. All right. Again, nineteen acres of the site is in common open space. Only eleven of the proposed lots, but a neighboring property line that I believe will play into the conversation about the rear, rear buffer on the forty two are actually adjoining an outside property. The closest residence that is contiguous to our sites are around eight hundred linear feet. To reiterate Sushil's earlier comments, we go ahead and walk the shelves in the community connecting up to the school site. Just a couple of representations of the homes we plan to build. Most of the homes are going to be in, this, this home here is a ranch plan, master down. It's twenty four hundred square feet. It's the smallest plan it will offer. Most of the others range between three thousand and forty one hundred square feet. You can kind of flip through those fairly quickly, Sushil, as you showed them in your presentation. So that was just a little bit of a quick update on what we're planning to do. Again, Sushil and his staff did a great job putting together the staff report, hearing some of the questions from the back. The creek, or it's called creek, it's an intermittent stream. We've had a wetless delineation for our core engineers have proved a delineation. It's an intermittent stream and wet weather carries water to McKee Creek, but it doesn't always have water in it. So it will be a culvert crossing. So she'll point it out as far as the perimeter buffers for the lots that do back up to an adjoining property owner that is not common open space already within the community. We agreed on request of staff to provide an eight foot landscape buffer around the perimeter. We hope that there could be more than that. When we get into design and know that our grading conditions and how we get stormwater from point A to point B, and know how much we have to denude and how much we can keep wooded, we'll know a little bit more about that. We haven't got to that stage in the game yet. That'll happen once, hopefully, if we get approval from council for rezoning and annexation and move into the design portion with Rob and his team, we'll know a little bit more about the grade where we can possibly move the clearing limits so that we have a little bit more of a wooded area between the properties that join an adjacent property. I did the question, I'm a colber, and the fence, yes, we have fencing around the B M P already planned. Now, in the plan, we call it for a kind of a farm rail fence. It doesn't get to the intent that you're looking for. You're looking, so we can work with staff and determine if that needs to be some type of different material or if it can be some type of meshing and type inside of a farm rail fence. But we understand the intent, we'll work with staff to get appropriate fencing around that pond. Any other specific questions about the site plan or what we have?
Other questions?
When you talk about that buffer, if, if eight is not, if that's the minimum, what would be the maximum in that space?
It's really hard to say where we are at this stage, because what, what we do is once we design and we know the depth of our home, and not every lot's the exact same depth. So we will go through there, and we know what the front setbacks will be, we know what the rear setbacks will be. We have to see how we have to tie the grades in. As we move through that, if we can save some trees, we'd love to save some trees, but we haven't got to that stage yet. We know from our commitment with Sushil and staff that it's a minimum of an eight foot buffer. We think that most of those lots can be greater than that, but I don't have enough information to commit to a certain number at this point.
Well, I know the development from D R Horton, it came through last month. Yeah, they're deeding into their plan on these lots. The last, and I forget how many feet are to remain natural and tree lined and everything else. So that helps create that additional buffer in that space.
So we can do it in multiple ways. You can have the, the buffer, which is a requirement, the eight foot, regardless of the, the existing canopy on the property, you would have at least that eight foot. If there were trees, existing trees in that eight foot, then we would have to produce our, we would have to plant new ones. If it's scenario like, we have some of these lots that are greater than two hundred feet. If we can keep fifty feet, we would love to, because that's a sales tool for us. We don't want to take down any more trees than we have to. We have to take down enough trees to make our grades top from point A to point B and get the stormwater in the same basin as it was before we started development. We will know that more as we move through. So I could not stand here right now and say that I have enough information to say if it's twenty five feet or ten feet or what that number may be. I think we're pretty protected with the eight foot that is a minimum of that. But as we move through design, if we, you've got your, you've got a buffer which is one thing, and then you have a, a tree save, which may not be required by ordinance, but we would like to preserve it if we could. So we'll know more about that, but understanding that's a question and a concern. As we move into design, we will try to address that as best as possible.
Because if you get your approval, all your guarantee is eight?
For the condition, that's correct, but is eight.
Conventional, conventional.
Right, that's, I mean, I don't know how you would.
So I don't know, Sushil, if that's even possible. Obviously, the condition says eight, and obviously, we'd like to see more. Can the condition read such that where applicable, the eight can be larger based on what he just said?
We, we, we could add, add a condition to speak to that buffer and bring back to you at the, at the meeting next month to consider.
Do you have any kind of history on, you know, you say this is just a culvert? Do you have any history on how this is designed or how this has flowed? And all, I mean, are any of the locals saying, yeah, we've seen it flood or?
No, other than the, the property owner himself, who just said it carries, it's a wet weather disc, carries water in the, in a storm event. Sushil, could you pull up the rendering again? Is there any way you could pull up the rendering? So as you can kind of see here, you have a, a pocket of wetlands that's further up the site. And then as you go down, it starts a little tributary that is not always carrying water. And then the closer you get to the creek, is that creek uses that as backflow in a, in a heavy rain event. So it would potentially build up a little bit towards the pond. But as you move upstream, that buffer, and I don't know that exact number right in front of me, but I, I want to say that that buffer on each side of the creek is somewhere around eighty feet. Rob, does that sound about right? So you've got at least eighty feet or so from that creek before you even touch a property line.
Crossing be grazed?
So the crossing, so we'll come down, the, the crossing will be, the culvert will be across the creek, and then we will build the, the road bed up. So the, the culvert will be a good bit below the actual road itself, without to maintain minimal maximum, I guess, just should say slopes. Town Harrisburg maximum slopes. So the culvert, not knowing exactly where it would be without getting in design, but if the culvert is here, but our max slope for the street is further up, we have to build that grade up to make sure we don't go over the max slope for Harrisburg standards.
What's the five hundred year on the show?
I don't know, it's five hundred year. We've got the hundred year, but I don't know five hundred year. You can pull it up on, on G I S, but being an intermittent stream, I, I don't. I don't think it would go up into that if you're talking about the roadway crossing.
Yeah, I mean, my, my edges are, are right there on that whole second half. What happens, you know, with a catastrophic event? You can't get them out of there.
I think even in a catastrophic event, I don't even know how you would classify, quantify that at this point with, with the culvert. If the property is going to be raised up enough, I guess, to give, maybe that could give you a little bit of a visual here. So the street grade will be raised high enough. If you notice that the detention pond is in the lower portion of the property.
Right.
So everything from, if you reach back drains. So the street and the storm drains probably will be far enough above the creek bed that it drains over the road and into that pond. When I say over the road, under the asphalt, but over the culvert to that pond. So there's a pretty good pitch on that property where I don't envision a catastrophic event that would keep you from crossing the road in the creek.
That stuff goes to farm properties today?
It goes to the farm road, I think it's basic property, yes, sir.
So do any of these larger lots allow for side load?
You know, you could potentially, but when we offer our product, our product, say, create the proper street skate, I don't know, there, there may be one or two that would allow it, but it might stick out more by allowing it. So we're not anticipating offering side load product.
And how much is the setback going to be? Is it going to be allowable, two cars parked in the driveway without it being on the sidewalk?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's twenty five, twenty five feet, yes. That's, that's from the right way. The planning strip, that, that would probably give us somewhere greater than twenty, around twenty feet or so from the sidewalk.
That's from the edge of the sidewalk, yes.
And the question, I'm sorry, about the emergency access. To the mayor's point, there would have a knock, knock, it's called a knock box where all the emergency services have access to. So that would be locked for like a better word for anyone else being able to access it. But all the emergency access folks would have a code to get in. And Sushil, if you want me to share the screen, I can share that five hundred year. It doesn't, it doesn't really come past the pond.
Rob, you should be able to share it.
So here's, here's the parcel, and here's the, this green hatched area, which is kind of the tip of the, the five hundred year, the extent of the roadway crossing would be quite a bit south of here with the pond. And that, that green area should be about where the, is charged by the, the B M P is. So it should tie directly to that.
So I mean, looking at that, Rob, would you say it's more to that? Are you concerned as opposed to want to cross?
As far as where, where there would be a flooding event?
Yeah, like where you're. Pointer is now, be those lots over there that may would have a concern, but just bear the opinion, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, these are kind of, these are all, I would, these lots can end on this side of this easement, this sewer line that runs here.
Right.
It's outside of that, five hundred years. So most of these lots are in backup here. This is all for a water pond, so you're, you're really well, well out with it there.
We just know that Harrisburg is traditionally low and places flood that you wouldn't expect.
We reject that, we will absolutely keep that in mind in all design.
So what is the build out? When do you expect to?
So if we see approval, we'll immediately go into design. Design the town takes generally somewhere between four and six months to get permitted. From that point, it would take us probably nine months for development. So as we stand here today, we're looking at probably a fifteen month timeframe before we start going vertical. Once we go vertical, assuming that the market conditions stay as they are right now, if they're, the way they are right now, we'll be out a year if they're.
You can tie the wood.
Yeah, if they're not, then, you know, maybe it's a year and a half. But we, we're confident enough in the location that even if the market corrects to, to some extent, that we will probably, a year and a half is about what we would have the forecast for a build out.
Other questions? Ask all, we have a public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, if the public here for those speaking for or against, just if you have any questions or requests for or against, if you're on the phone or on soon, please raise your hand. If you can raise your hand, we'll call you. If anybody agree, we should speak for or against, please. If anybody agree, we should speak for or against, please pardon. Last call on Zoom, raise your hand. We close the public hearing and this will be fired until next month. That's correct?
That is correct.
So again, next month, council actually approval, that is request and residents have certainly time to chat with their council members. It's kind of the next one.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next item is again another conditional rezoning, zoning map amendment and annexation. It's 2021 O2R associated with Hooks Landing subdivision. With these three parcels, the total acres is 2.45 acres. They're off Plaza Road Extension. Again, the, the goal here is to build six single family attached homes, which, which translates in this case to townhomes, owner occupied townhomes. The property is currently in the county and you'll see on the map down a few slides that this is part of a bigger project that extends into Mecklenburg County, into city of Sorlet. There are 66 units. The difference between what we have versus them is we are requiring this to be a conditional rezoning. That's why the site plan is required. We're also requiring the townhomes to be alley loaded, not front loaded garages. In, in the other side of the county, they, they did not require conditional rezoning. They've already approved rezoning, your, your traditional rezoning from one zone to another without a site plan. So it's already been approved for 66 front loaded townhomes in, 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 in Mecklenburg County. The current joining is LDR on our side, Cabras County, which is low density residential. The requested joining for this six single family attached homes would be conditional RV on our side. Here's the location of the parcel for your reference. Again, on the top, you can see how it relates to the corporate limit. It's not very far from Brookdale Town Homes. You can see a little peak. It's, the corporate limit is right across the parcel. It does not touch it, so we're calling it non-contiguous. But as we take this through the process, we'll extend that annexation to cross the street. So there is that continuity. On the, on the left-hand side, you can see those three parcels that straddle the county line. So here is the site plan. On the left-hand side, you can see the context of how it fits into the, the developer's plan to build townhomes in, in the Mecklenburg County portion and how it fits into our side and how, how it all ties back to Plaza Road Extension. On your right-hand side is the little close-up look of the six townhome units. You can see there's, there will be a 20-foot buffer perimeter setback. That includes eight-foot planted buffer on the, on the north side of the property. You can also see there is a, a stub street intended to be connected to that future parcel to the north. And that, there is only one vacant parcel between this proposed project and, and the medical building that's already built. So we have a stub set up so it can be connected whenever that, that property is available for, for subdivision. There is a 25-foot perimeter buffer. Again, the requirement along Thorfirs, there will be buffer with six-foot high berm and it will be planted to provide that screening for those townhomes along, along Plaza Road Extension. We'll have a median divided entryway, like this has become consistent in all of the newer subdivisions we're doing in Harrisburg. And as I mentioned earlier, it's already approved, the rezoning. It was not a conditional rezoning, so they did not require a site plan to be submitted as part of the approval, but a concept, what, what the, what the, the developer intends to do is known for your reference, but that is already approved and ready to go. There will be mail kiosks with on-street parking next to the, next to the open space amenities. You can see that public open space right next to the main entrance. It will have some benches and other equipments for, for folks to enjoy, enjoy that open space next to, next to the townhomes. So here's a rendering of what that rear loaded townhome. So if you are on Plaza Road Extension, this is the view you will be seeing rather than the series of garages, which is how the Mecklenburg County portion will be built. How does it fit with the landy's plan? So this one was a little tricky. I'm, I'm calling it mixed use because it's, it's right at the edge of that pink area and there are only three parcels that are on, on this side of Mecklenburg County that, that does not, that's on the west side of the Plaza Road Extension. So let's keep it that way. And then rest of the properties in Harrisburg and Cabras Counties are on the east side of Plaza Road Extension. So this three parcels, remaining parcel, they're a kind of squeezed. And, and by extension, we staff is comfortable calling it the extension of mixed use and, and bringing this forward to allow that mix of housing, that six townhomes to be built on those parcels, given that Sorlet is already intending to build townhomes on their portion. We do not have in the books, the mixed use zoning classification, but we will be in the new UDO. But again, the RV that has been asked here, which is residential villas, supports that principle of creating urban growth with, with that housing types and creating community centers. So we are making a recommendation that RV is meeting the intent of mixed use to give that mix of housing, office and commercial that is intended for that node just right around the corner from this, from this property. The density of these units is 2.45, which is again support, supported by RV. RV, the maximum is eight units, but once this is approved, the conditional rezoning, it will be capped at 2.45. There are utilities along the, across the, across the street on Cabras Woods. There is also utilities by the medical building, but again, the applicant will have to bear the cost to extend to the site. Transportation impacts. We, we worked with NC DOT to make sure the driveway location was approved by them, at, at least as, as a concept during the rezoning. But again, more review will be done down the road. There was no TIA given the number of homes proposed. The council may be asking, okay, Sorlet is proposing 66 additional townhomes. That's going to be spilled over on Plaza Road. So why the TIA was not done? Even, even with those homes added into the mix, it would not trigger a TIA. For our townhomes, the threshold, the minimum number of townhome units per our ordinance would be 130 townhome units. If we were around 130 townhomes, then we would have required a TIA regardless. But in this case, it does not meet that. The schools, again, given the size, there is like minimal to no impact with this townhomes. We did not get actual impact numbers from this school, given the size. And there's safety and sanitation services available. We've added few conditions. I know this is, this is small compared to the previous rezoning request, but your, your, your primary cladding again will, vinyl will not be allowed. There is actually for townhomes, there is a requirement to have, have some mix of some brick and other materials. So vinyl definitely is not going to be used. You know, applicant also agrees, like on the single family side, no exposed concrete foundations. And we'll make sure that our mailbox clusters are ADA compliance. With the rezoning, the applicant also submitted annexation request. This is again voluntary, non-contiguous annexation of those three parcels that are squeezed between the county line. Only three parcels left there on the west side of Plaza Road Extension that straggles the county line. The request is again to build townhomes under RV standards. We did publish notice in the paper and notified adjoining property owners as required by law for the annexation and rezoning petition that is in front of you. There is just a, just the plat, annexation plat that will be recorded if it is approved by the council at the next meeting. Like, like the other items, both of these went to the neighborhood meeting at the same time. Those were presented to the neighborhood on January 21st of 2021. As I, as I noted earlier, we, by the extension of that mixed use district and mixed use node, we are construing it to be consistent and meeting the intent of the HLL. And given that the city of Sorlet has already approved the misery of the townhome units, it makes sense for us to tie it in and approve six townhome units that is in front of you. But again, the quality will be different. We, we have a different style of townhomes that will be visible from Plaza Road Extension. As folks drive through it, they will not be able to see the garages like you typically see with the front loaded townhomes, which will be on the Mecklenburg County side. This was presented to the planning and zoning board at their May 18th meeting. They did recommend the council consider approving the request. Again, the property is in the county and the public hearing tonight is both for rezoning and annexation. The final action will be at the July 12th meeting. We'll be bringing this in front of you as old business item for your action. I'll be happy to answer any questions and I believe there's a representative from the applicant in the room to answer any questions for you as well.
Questions?
Sushil, Councilman Patrick here. I'd like to know, were this project 100% in Harrisburg? What additional conditions would we typically require or ask of the applicant?
Yeah, it would be similar to what you saw. If there was a stormwater required as part of this, we, all the stormwater requirements would come into play. We would look at much more perimeter buffer, the trail connections. So all, everything that we typically or just discussed in the previous subdivision would come into play. Given the size and the person we're dealing with, we, we had only very few to deal with. And, and, and if it was more than 66 and close to 130 townhomes, then we would have triggered the TIA as well. But again, if it was single family homes and more assemblies and a different project, then we would treat it like any other conditional rezoning you, you had seen come in front of you.
So presumably the applicant could put vinyl siding on the remaining homes and, and make this six on the Harrisburg side relatively nice.
No, they can't as it stands, yes. So we, we made a condition that our townhomes on our side would be rear loaded. The Mecklenburg side was not a conditional rezoning, meaning, so they, they did not have to, have to submit a site plan for the approval. It, it basically changed the zoning from A to B to allow those townhomes to be built. So the next step for the Mecklenburg side is to submit the plans and, and, and get approval. So the site plan in their case was not attached to the rezoning. In our case, it is attached and it is a conditional rezoning. That's why we were able to control the townhomes, how it is fronted, whether that's alley loaded or, or, or front loaded. And we were also able to control the, the materials required. If it was a straight up rezoning, all of that would not come into play.
I'm sorry, what I was asking is for the, for the homes that are not in Harrisburg, they are not restricted by any materials other than building code, correct?
That is correct.
So as a, as a whole development, that look and feel and everything does affect us, but we have no control over it, except that the entrance into this development is under our control.
That is correct.
And did we approach the applicant and ask if they would consider restricting materials on the entire development, given that the only access is from our side?
I think we talked briefly about it, but given that we did not have, the Sorlet did not require, I think they went by the requirement, but applicant could speak if they're willing to comply with the same material requirement. I'll, I'll let him speak.
What other questions? Then we'll let the applicant speak on the question that you just asked. Anything else? Do you want to come to that?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Eddie Moore with the Gads. Sushil, I have a couple of slides.
And you can do the slides first and answer the question if you have.
You want the question answered?
I do whatever you want.
Sure. I mean, with, with the materials, like Sushil said, the Charlotte side was not a conditional rezoning. The reason for that is due to the coordination that we're going to have in between the two counties, the two municipalities of making this project work. And, but the sense and the feel of it's, we're not going to have six units. Again, I'm, I'm with the Gads, a land development designer, not with the builder representing through that. But the, the feel will be the same. It doesn't make sense to have six units and have something that's completely different. That's not what will happen here with this development, but of conditioning something for one municipality and in a different municipality is something that I cannot, as part of that. The layout and the design, Sushil, you can probably split it in a couple, couple of slides. One, one more. Before, before that, two, two before, there we go. Just, just some, some highlights with this and looking at the Harrisburg side. Yes, we are going to go with rear loaded. We will have the, we will have the landscape plaza that's along Plaza Road Extension. We will have, if you notice, there's quite a bit of open space. Looking at distances, we're, you see the distance is 550 feet from Brookdale, 370 from the Bowmont facility. And there is just one piece that is separating that facility to this development. So there's just one piece of sidewalk, it'll be sidewalk all along the front Plaza Road Extension. The six dwelling units total density, two and a half, open space, we're at 50%. Sushil, can we go to the next slide, please? Here is the, the rendering. Here it's grayed out and we have worked with Charlotte staff on the layout inside. It's going to be relatively close. We have dropped some units from our initial assessment. We did push all the units further away from Plaza Road. There are some soils that are a little unsuitable along Plaza Road Extension. That's why you don't see any units that are there. Plus also having the difficulty of keeping the sublots either in Charlotte or within Harrisburg. So we have the diagonal boundary. So in doing that, we had to, we were unable to even put units in those areas. So, but we were able to capture some open space. Next slide, please. This, you're seeing this, Sushil left this on the slide. We will have, you know, the entryway, it will be open and we will have the active amenity up front. And from there, you'll have the scallions to the side and the buffer area. That'll be the long Plaza Road Extension. Next slide. And, and same rendering. I think that's all we do have. We'll, that's all we have and we'll answer any other questions.
Since the Charlotte side's not conditioned, I'm assuming there's no rental restrictions as far as the number of units that can be used for rental property. Any other questions?
Did you consider putting the amenity over on the Charlotte side, building more on Harrisburg side?
Uh, no, we didn't with having the, the county boundary at that angle. We were putting the pieces together, we were really unable to do that. We had to keep the sublots in one or the other jurisdiction. So having that diagonal line was a little challenging. So we're like, okay, let's move the amenity area up to the front.
By, by our UDO standard, we do not allow homes to be on top of the county line. It, it was the case many years ago. I think the UDO was changed a few years ago, which is, which is a best practice to, to not have a primary building, vertical building on the county line. This creates a lot of, lot of issues down the road. So I think kind of moving around that created some open space that, that folks can enjoy if, if it gets approved. But one other thing we could talk, and I know the true homes representative is not here, but we could ask them if they're willing to extend the condition of vinyl onto the, onto the other side. We could, we could ask that and bring back feedback at the July meeting for you.
All right, we'll do that. That's without flipping anything July anyway. Any other questions before we have the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enough of the public hearing for those speaking for or against this rezoning request. Go to the phones, raise your hand. If you're on the line, use the bridge and feature and then the public members. Well, come stand up here. If they really, I know what you guys are waiting on. Seeing buddy raising their hand. Left. I'm going to call the public hearing and the threshold be next month. All right, last but not least, sure that people are ready or what, we should have reversed this order, right?
One more public hearing for you tonight and we'll be done. So, the public hearing, the last public hearing tonight is, this is not related to rezoning or any land use, but is to consider the abandonment requests we received from property owners on either side of Hereford Lane. There is a public right-of-way that is not utilized and we have a request in front of you to consider abandoning that and giving it back to the property owners. So, we received petition from the two adjoining property owners requesting that it be abandoned and the property be split in half as required by law and giving it back to the property owner. If you recall, that as part of the Harmony subdivision rezoning request, there was a conversation about the stub connection on those, there was two stubs, one in Hereford and one in Sorley laying down. I'll show you on the map. But now that council has approved that rezoning without this connection, there is no use for this public right-of-way and staff is in full support of this. So, a resolution of intent as required by the law was adopted at the May tenth council meeting and it is required that we do four public posting in the newspaper as required by the state law. So, we did that. We also notified the adjoining property owner and the sign was posted on the property requesting public participation regarding this abandonment request. So, here's the property. If you look on the right-hand side, if you can see my mouse, so this is where the stub, there's one stub and the second stub down here. So, those were the two stub connection that we discussed during the Harmony Acres and the council ultimately made a decision to not make that stub connection and only keep one. So, that is what resulted in this stub right-of-way not being of use for the town for public purpose. So, the star that is on your left-hand side is the property owners on either side of this Hereford Lane that requested that we abandon the public right-of-way and give it back to those property owners equally divided, so they could make it part of their property and maintain it once it is approved by the council. So, the Planning and Joining Department at this point recommends holding the public hearing. Given that we have no use for that public right-of-way, we're recommending approval down the road when it comes to the vote at the July meeting. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thanks, Sushil. Enough of the public hearing for those speaking for or against. I do know we have two that signed up in the room. You're welcome to come to the podium and if you have any matters you wish, or it's up to you. Anyone on the phone wishing to speak for or against, please raise your hand. So, you know, we'll close the public hearing, consideration will happen next month. You guys want to take a little recess?
No, let's keep going. Keep going. It's one of the moments.
Your oldest is going to middle school, right?
My oldest is going to sophomore year. My youngest is going to fourth grade.
I don't know if they can still.
What filter door is supposed to be? It is. I don't know. Is my wife?
I'm on the roof. But you start low.
Why, I asked you how long, six months, it's fine. It's better, I actually expect it to be a little worse. Because you did.
I'm doing it. I've been doing with it.
Tell me, maybe it's right. I told, I told, I was like, keep this away. But I was dying. I do too.
I'm prepared. I'm like, where is my coat?
So, I used to have that, I have said, I did a bunch of, I just, yeah, I think it said three, six months. I can tell the difference.
I wasn't sure. I haven't been on the things. I looked on, I was looking at things ugly. And then grabbed a hand and was like.
Yep, or exactly what I meant.
I actually, I was like.
And so, mine, I would turn the water pressure down. You would immediately turn her off. Then you wish, you know, we would clean, then it would do okay for all. Yeah, and there's no bit of whiteness. They're all.
More score. Still questionable. Back up. We all muted. James, are we muted?
From water?
No, yeah.
Yes, your immediate members have the same message.
I got a call. Is that? Are we muted?
You're not muted.
Thank you.
So, Greg and everybody else.
Yeah, I'm like a hundred yards from you.
All right, going to new business. Remember the planning, planning board and board of justice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the agenda in front of you tonight on your business is to consider appointment of a new member to the planning and joining board, and by virtue of that to the board of assessment because they do share the membership. Let me see. Okay, so there are two positions that are vacant. That will be as of the end of June, I guess it will expire on June 30th. One of the position is to get a member from the Harrisburg Town Limits and the other one is in the ETZ. We did receive three applications once we advertised for the vacancy. All three were from the Harrisburg Limits. We did not get any applications to serve as an ETJ representative. The Planning and Joining Board Subcommittee was created and they interviewed all three applicants on May 10 and made their recommendations to the full planning board at the May meeting. The Planning and Joining Board affirmed the Subcommittee recommendation to appoint Mr. Kevin Hutchins to fill the vacancy. And I am bringing Planning Board's recommendation for you to consider an appointing Mr. Kevin Hutchins to fill the vacancy. One of the planning board members had planned to attend, but given the past 10, see gave that opportunity for me to speak on behalf of the board. The ETZ position will remain vacant until filled. It's not uncommon Concord and other jurisdictions as the ETZ shrinks. There are very limited options and interested folks to serve, so it will remain vacant until we have. We have an application, we'll continue to look for that vacancy to be filled down the road. Once approved, the new appointee will start their term starting July 1st, 2021, and will serve a three-year term. With that, back to the council for consideration.
Question your prayer.
A motion on the floor. Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Puss nay. All right, next up sewer phase one, another. Although, I remember we traveled.
Now it gets exciting.
About a 12 pager coming in.
Right, we got a small break before we get started now. Next two items on the agenda. I'll cover relatively briefly and these are both items you guys are really familiar with, so I'll try to go through it. If you have any questions during the presentation, just get it into that. The first one is the Morehead West Sewer Project Ordinance Extension. This is just moving this project which was recently bid to further date in the future due to some fleet irregularities. So this is a background on this project. You can see on the screen, this is a project, the decommissioned Leatherwood Pump Station and extends sewer through the first phase out to the Morehead West. Predevelopment area, top 4,800 feet of 12-inch gravity sewer. So this is phase one of getting gravity sewer out to the Morehead West project. This was authorized by council both as a CIP project to decommission the pump station and as an other. During the bidding process on this, we ended up with a engineer's estimate of about $2.2 million. We felt like that was a really conservative estimate. Based on the projects that we did the previous year, we felt like the bids would come in well under. We had plenty of contingency for this project. We bid this and received bids on April 15th. We got three bids. The three bids we received, DE Water, $2.6 million, well over the engineer's estimate. And that included a bidding here of $1.35 million. So that would have been the bid, $2.2 million. A little bid on this project was actually $3.86 million. And the third bid was $5.7 million. So obviously staff rejected all those bids, it's one, they were close to the engineer's estimate. Honestly, we're kind of shocked to see bids that high. So we went back to the design engineer, we talked to the little bit contractor and looked over at the engineering to just kind of see what happened and rebid this for one month later. See if the conditions improved, maybe we didn't have enough bidders. What we actually discovered this was why the bids were so high is temporary hyperinflation. So, you know, we're seeing this, you know, across boards, I think I heard the council Smith or Mayor joke about the lumber package for the biller that was up here last, you know, you've seen lumber packages go to the roof, you see home supplies go to the roof. Well, sewer projects are right there. So the 2.3 million cost that we used on this project is based off a project that we bid and awarded less than nine months ago. So what's causing that? Short-term supply chain disruption, so reemergence of COVID-19 in India has disrupted a lot of what we use for sewer projects, like castings, like PVC. The reopening, the reopening, you know, you talked earlier on our budget, we delayed all of our projects here. So now we have two years of projects we want to build this year. And the previous year, all suppliers emptied their warehouses because they weren't sure there was going to be any demand or when it would come back. So, you know, you combine those two supply and demand issues, there is no supply and there's double the demand across the entire country. And there's labor shortage. So the layoffs that happened in 2020, businesses did not rehire quick enough. They didn't think they probably would open this quick. And so here we are with labor prices through the roof, material prices through the roof, it's a supply and demand. Just to give you an idea of the projects, so Britley Sewer that we received in June 2020 is the unit cost that we have there. Well, that was an eight-inch project and this is a 12-inch project, the material cost between the two isn't significant. It's usually an installation cost between those two, so eight-inch and 12-inch, there is some cost difference, but, you know, it's single-digit percentage. If you look at the unit cost that we got on our main aisles on this project. PVC sewer told the 14-foot deep, last year was $124 a foot, now it's $364 a foot. That's 193% increase. And that's just right in the middle. If you looked at like a very extreme crossing, we're actually doing a jack and bore with a metal pipe. You know, went from $1,100 a foot to $5,300 a foot, 382% increase in that month. What do we do about that? We've got, you know, samples here in the presentation of letters that we received from the design engineer on this. He had received these from suppliers, you know, across the state who have actually pulled out of their supply contracts. They've went ahead and implemented force majorities, said we can't honor our bids that we gave yet, the prices are going up. So PVC is 66% up. Castings are 50% up. Those issues in all of these letters that we never really talked to seem to be a temporary issue. It's not, we don't think that's going to be decommissioned two to five years from now. We could be wrong on that, but ultimately we're looking at a situation where demand was delayed and now it's all coming due at once and supply was cut. So until those two level up a little bit more, a project like this is going to be $4 million as opposed to $2 million without a big. So our suggestion is just delay the project. This is a project that has immediate need, imminent failure. Leatherwood Pump Station can continue for several years, always upgrade that pump station. And just having this project on the books and ready to build is already an economic development incentive if we're looking to develop that area. It takes so long to develop an area that big. Just having our CIP and developers knowing that, you know, we're ready to invest dollars when it's economical is the best approach the staff sees right now. We'd like to take it through the budget process next year, take a better look at our market conditions and then come back and say, you know, this is a yea or nay. For the next budget process. So our recommendation is to, again, motion to approve the Morehead West Capital Project Ordinance Extension Amendment as a patch that would effectively delay the project.
Okay, a motion. A motion on the floor.
Not good.
Properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Puss nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, the next one's Harrisburg Park Track replacement. So this is a contract to replace the existing track at the new park facility. Everybody's very familiar with the track. This track was put in more narrow than council would like to see it, it's eight foot, we'd like to see it at 10 foot ideally. And probably about 50% of the track was put in substandard. So we've gone, you know, back and forth with the contractor on this. Long and short of it is, you know, we've asked for a credit, we're negotiating that credit. But in the meantime, we want to move forward with actually installing the track, I would like it, and apply that credit to the cost of the rebuild. So the cost of the rebuild, and we have our own contractor outside of the CMR on this project. So this would be part of the current CMR project. This is a contractor that we're very comfortable with, familiar with, a large asphalt contractor that can mobilize and get what we want done correctly. But the total cost of replacing that track, taking what's there out, putting 10 foot down instead of eight foot is $98,685. $70,000 of that is. So if we were just to take it up as it is and put it back down, we have that estimated about $70,000. So the difference to go to 10 foot is the additional $28,685. We can't really put that on the CMR spec, that's going to be kind of responsibility. And then the current offer from the contractor as a credit to what's down there now is $16,000. They estimate that's 50% of their asphalt cost to put it in. The council rejected that and we withheld payment on that. But just to give you a type of the extremes there, we're going to get credit somewhere between $16,000 and $70,000, depending how that.
They have admitted fault.
What's that?
They have admitted fault on how they constructed it, even the eight foot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, it's very clear that there's portions of it that are not adequate. And they do have, they do have a right to cure their product, but when you have that much that needs cured out there, you know, the finished product is not going to be like any track. So that's been our conversation with them, is that, you know, we don't want 50% repaired track and 50% good track. We want 100% good tracks. So really the only cure from our standpoint is to take it up and put it back down. We also don't have, I don't have, I'm going to say we, I don't have any confidence in that contractor, you know, to take it up and put it back down. Considering the call turned out first time.
The replacement, will they lower it back down, which is supposed to have the water, it's supposed to cascade over it?
No, that southern end of the track has been addressed with yard derrels. So they put front shrimps and back derrels in there to catch that. So what this would do is be mill up everything that's there down to the gravel and replace it. You know, actually widen it two feet, additional gravel and replace it with a 10-foot asphalt ground. And again, we're going to, we're pursuing that credit along with, you know, the other things that we're still negotiating on that project. So you could expect a credit somewhere between $16,000 and $70,000 instead of being full price, $16,000, you know, what they offered so far. The fiscal impact of that is, you know, just like I said, I've been repeating there, when you see the project ordinance costs, this would actually increase. Brian would have to increase the project ordinance $100,000. That's going to come out of.
Capital reserve fund.
That'll come out of the capital reserve fund. We've also have $100,000 of maintenance and repair out of the, or the general fund, the street maintenance and repair that will be turning back in, that we saved, that is kind of what I'm set for this. So it's an unusual impact overall, but logistically Brian will have to take it out of one fund. Everything we don't spend this year will just fall back into that one. So here's the, the three sources that kind of covered it. So, you know, eventually we'll get that credit back somewhere between $16,000 and $70,000 of its hundred that we're spending. We do have a contingency balance still of $20,000 that we go towards this cost if necessary. And then, like I said, you know, that $100,000 street maintenance and repair funds, you know, we discussed. Just saving that, not spending it this year and applying it back to replenish that capital reserve fund. So, yeah, we talked about the contractor, just give them a cost of the project. We did do two informal bids, we got a price from the CMR risk. We got a price from Red Clay Industries, who does quite a bit of roadwork related to widening at Morehead there. And we want the lowest, most responsible bidder. When I say lowest, most responsible, Red Clay is not the lowest, but they are the most responsible. Very tight meeting to get it done in July, so we're very, that's really our primary goal is we can't miss that July window. That's the window we had in between program for the parks. So we selected Red Clay and the bid was also very close to the engineer's estimate that we had internally. And they were all within striking distance of each other, so we're very comfortable with that. And the time to end this also review approved contract. We're asking for a motion award to contract amount of $98,685 directly to Red Clay Industries for their sewer park track replacement project and the related project ordinance. I'll take any other questions if you guys have.
So obviously now you're saying, is that going to jeopardize our ability to get any more money out of them since they're not going to give the contract anyway?
Now, we've talked about that, I mean, it's been six months since we've notified on this, you know, we've simply sent a paper to the library. There's always some gray area when you're enforcing contract stipulations like that. I don't see it being having any real effect. Ultimately, we know the staff out there are two options, either hire somebody else or let them do it themselves. And my opinion would be if we let.
Our track records out today.
No pun intended. Yeah, my opinion is if you allow the original contractor to do again, it'll be the same result and we'll be here in the next spring. Trying to see if our next spring is the good one.
Your bond to pull against?
We've already, we've reserved something for this, so it's not any bond format. We actually pull a contingency back or also an escrow from the CMR. And they pay their contractor, so really our withholding is from JD.
Motion. Got a motion on the floor. Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Puss nay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Sustainability Advisory Board, new member. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the Sustainability Advisory Board bylaws call for the board to have nine members. Only there are seven, so they are now, they have two new applications for membership in May 12, 2021. The Sustainability Board meeting, the Board of Directors who voted to recommend the council to consider appointment of Ronald Hogg Senior and Bill Lee to fill the two vacancies. If approved, these two appointments will serve until December 31st, 2021. Also, or if they so choose, they can apply for reappointment to a full two-year term after that. Their applications have been provided for council for review and consideration. And these openings have been advertised since May 2nd, and these were the only two applicants that were received.
Any motion? Got a motion on the floor. Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Puss nay.
Next up,衷 trash can.
We have reached the last item of the new business. And that is just a discussion on our HOA Center's waste management. So just to give you a little background, our contract for Waste Pro spans from November of 2017 through June 2024. It is funded completely with residential property taxes. Section 4A of our contract for Waste Pro states that a contractor shall provide each town-approved resident one 96-gallon car specifically designed for trash. There is no provision in our contract at all for solid waste collection for any other type of property in town other than residential unit. So some recent developments over the past couple of weeks, Waste Pro discovered as a part of their internal contract review that they were erroneously picking up all of our HOAs or a large number of our HOAs trash over the past couple of years. And neither the town or HOAs were paying for this. And they just corrected it right away when they noticed it by not picking up people's trash. And so we heard about that and we actually got with Waste Pro and had them service a couple of them or quickly establish new contracts on their own. So we've been told by the ones that tried to establish their own contract that it's about $91 a month from Waste Pro. But they do have the ability to suspend that service during off months in the case of a pool for an HOA. So we had a couple of ideas on the staff level of what we could do here. The first one is just no changes to the town contract. HOAs are, would be responsible to establish their own service. They can choose Waste Pro or another provider, whoever they would like to get that taken care of. They could also get a dumpster or something like that instead of that in trash cans. Our second option is for us to attempt to negotiate a better price than $91 a month with Waste Pro given our relationship and our existing contract. It's probably something we could accomplish, we haven't talked to them about that, but, you know, we have a pretty good relationship with them and a pretty sizable contract. So I would think that we could get a better price than $91, but I can't commit to anything there. And then the third option would be to absorb the HOAs in our current town contract. So there would be an additional cost to that that we haven't discussed with Waste Pro yet, but it's certainly an option that we can discuss with them if you would like. There's probably options tucked in between some of those three as well, but those are the three that we came up with and completely open to whatever you would like.
I'll jump in real quick. I think my HOA was the one who stirred the hornet's nest, I guess, and discovered this. And it was just because they didn't pick up the trash, but it wasn't just Waste Pro because we probably was picking it up too. So when Waste Pro came in to go with contract, they, you know, the cans were picked up, new cans were dropped. There has been a conversation, I think since yours, with Waste Pro. Initially, they were saying 91 a month, now they're saying they'll do it for 25 a can to the months that you need. The crazy thing is, is, and maybe it's because the contract was established, but they found out that Cantorfield is paying $53.31 a quarter. So there's, you know, it just depends on who you call and who you talk to.
Okay, I think the second option and the third option should be reviewed, come back. We should go get a better price, that's ridiculous.
Okay, yeah.
If I was the HOA, I would run those carts next to a resident's house and nobody would even know.
Well, they already told, they told our HOA, they already audited how many cans were in the neighborhood.
Yeah, sure, the guy picks up the trash.
The wood, right?
They have a can.
They turn the board, they try to head that off and say, and if you take it somewhere else, we'll know about that.
Or just take your trash and dump it into other guys, you don't even do that, just move the can.
So how many HOAs are in Harrisburg that would be involved?
So I know when I talk to Lee, I talk about at least getting your correspondence out because some still know this, it's getting them, and some had still picked up. So we're going to do it, make sure those communication got out to all the ones to your point, trying to track them down. And then if we were to establish and do rate for, decide that we're going to eat the cost, at least we'll be able to have that listed and communicated quickly.
We think it's in the teens for number of HOAs.
I think I have.
The problem with the per cart charges usually requires a number of carts for a pool center or something like that, so that can get above 91 real fast.
Yeah, as well.
And I think we have a standard of like four or five cans sitting there. And I probably roll out three on average. What, you know, the crux of the issue was, was suddenly it just stopped and.
Same, surprise.
And it was kind of funny because we, I had a meeting with them, our quarterly meeting to go over how everything's going. That was the week before they stopped picking it up, but no one mentioned it to me.
We've got 24 HOAs on our list.
Which is, so you definitely give it $91 a month times 24, that's a lot of money. They're trying to recoup what they've spent the last two years.
And if you say you're only going to pick it up June, May, June, July, August, September, there's Christmas parties that occur in November and December, so are they not going to pick it up then? I know with our amenity, it's closed at the end of September, so you can't go and have another party or anything like that. Well, how many of the HOAs have clubhouses that allow it though? So, I mean, are we going to be looking at multiple ways and do we need to try to set one way for everybody?
I think if we bring it into the town contract, it's just going to be all year, if you set a can out, they'll pick it up. If it's going to be, you know, the HOA's responsibility to renegotiate a better contract or a better price for them, then they would be able to choose how many months.
I think we need to actually look more at the last one, which is add it to our contract. I mean, these are residents, I mean, they may be at the HOA, but they're taking their trash from their house and they're bringing it to the pool. I mean, it's not, essentially it's not net new trash, they would have had it one way or the other.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
I would see with that, I actually bet them, but if we could look at what they would charge if we pushed on the rate or what they would charge us.
Okay.
Yeah, because according to them, they don't have many cans.
Because they have a can counter on board.
But my plan, bring it onto the town contract would be, let's just keep our residential rate and add the number of HOAs to it. So I would hope we'd be getting a much better.
They're picking it up until now anyways.
Right.
What does that look like?
Yeah.
91 times 4.
44. Which is kind of high. Okay, well, I guess as quickly as we can get that information to you, we'll do that in between meetings.
And I don't know, your correspondence with HOAs, is that via address or is there an email?
Oh, no, I have email and phone number.
So if you can just shoot an email saying, you know, council's considering several options, you can even list the last two or to come, but in the meantime, what are they doing?
Some have set up that contract on their own and I don't know what some of the others are doing.
I haven't yelled at this yet.
I haven't heard from, I've only heard. I haven't heard from, I've only heard from three.
And then the other thing was that our HOA got, they said to start servicing, you need a credit card. What HOA has a credit card?
And who's willing to put theirs out?
So it was kind of, they were stuck.
Well, I would ask, and I will tomorrow, I'll ask Waste Pro to continue services for us while we figure out what we're going to do. So hopefully they'll take care of it over the next month.
Thanks.
All right, thanks very much.
All right, I will, I have a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll all be ready, actually.
Oh, sorry. Have three action items. Research on the best communication for the community. So we want to see if we can find out how we can reach out to everybody. Second one is get with Mr. Weaver and find out exactly where speeding happening. So we get a speed trailer out there. And then most recently, we'll get email out to the HOA's loaner what's going on that we're trying to do for. Okay, yeah, I can.
You look at that communication, we had mentioned something several months ago that there's a notification that goes out after the fact on notify me. But if the notification about council meetings and the agenda could go prior with notify me, I don't know if that's possible. We had talked about that several months ago.
I'm sure ladies just research those for doing other areas. Charlotte.
Just last thing, next one. That's some of the HOAs.
Next.
I just got one while we were sitting.
What's the Indian population of most towns that I use?
Huh? What's that?
What's that?
What's that?
You need WhatsApp. You don't need WhatsApp.
I need yick yak.
Tic tac, tic tac.
Motion to go into closed session.
And motion on the floor. I'll put second it. All in favor, say aye. I don't think anybody needs to leave for this.